Evening, everybody. We're going to call to order the Program Personnel Committee Meeting for this evening. If we could all stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we know that our colleague Don Carmichael is joining us tonight on the livestream. I'm going to take us through the PNP Committee Agenda in his virtual absence, but he will be joining our discussion. Kara Benjamin will be joining us shortly, and Jim Batson was on his way back from out of town and did not know what time he was going to arrive. So we're not going to wait for either of our colleagues, but we're going to go ahead and get started because we have a full agenda for our committee meetings tonight. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor. Is there anybody wishing to address the board for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move right on to our second Communication Agenda item. We are very glad to welcome the Ecos Club for an update.
Good evening. Do you have our presentation?
One second, let me get it shared up here.
Thank you. I'm just going to pull up my phone for speeder notes, if that's okay.
Sure, of course. And can you make sure the mic is on?
Yes, sorry. Oh, on. I see a light.
Perfect. We just want to be sure that not only the people in the room can hear you, but anybody who's streaming can also hear you, and that's why I wanted to be sure you were speaking into the mic.
Of course.
Thank you.
I don't have the right one. One second. I should have been prepared with this. I apologize.
No worries.
Yeah, I can get speeder notes on my phone, though.
Just so you know, Lisa, I can hear fine.
Excellent. Thanks, Don.
It's not loading. So this is an update from Ecos. So our shoreline restoration project is doing very well. It was completely funded through grants and fundraisers and other ways that we use in order to make this have no cost to the district. If I listed out all the grants, it would take a lot of time, but we worked very hard in order to ensure that we are able to raise $25,000 for this.
Excellent.
Yes.
Just let me know when you want me to change.
Okay, thank you. So we started with a softball practice field, which was mostly done by the AP Environmental Science team. This project is now completely planted, and we are working on maintaining it and collecting native seeds that we can maintain the area and also use the seeds for further projects. And then, like I said, we maintained it over the summer. Students and community members came in and worked on it to plant the remaining plants and then make sure that they stayed, to make sure that they flowered and lasted through to the fall. Next, we have started our main shoreline planting a couple of weeks ago. This is what it looks like before, where it was mostly invasive plants like butt thorns. Through a community effort, which involved groups from Ecos, the community, AP Environmental Science, leaf students, and outdoor ed, we have now planted a lot of the shoreline and are still working on it, including tomorrow for daring day. As it says, 2,500 plants in, 1,000 to go, a lot of which will be done tomorrow. Daring Day, this is just a little bit of information on what we're going to be doing tomorrow. For seniors and juniors that aren't taking the PSAT, we're going to be welcoming them onto campus and the shoreline so that they can help us complete those projects before planting season is over.
What's next? Ecos students will like to be involved with the district's efforts to reduce our global footprint, working together to develop a district climate action plan, and also to take advantage of solar energy incentives now. A K-12 climate action plan. U.S. Public K-12 Schools occupy 2 million acres of land, are one of the largest public energy consumers, produce the equivalent of 18 coal-fired power plants, serve over 7 billion meals, and generate 530,000 tons of food waste. Local-level recommendations. Our first recommendation is to acknowledge and prioritize the opportunity for the education sector to advance climate solutions. Our second recommendation is to develop and implement comprehensive local K-12 climate action plans to consider the needs and opportunities to mitigate, adapt, educate, and advance equity to address climate change. Going into more detail for the second recommendation, support mitigation strategies to transition to clean energy, clean transportation, sustainable food use, and on. Support adaptation and resilience strategies by assigning local climate risks and determining school needs, and supporting teaching and learning on climate education, and also advance equity while developing local K-12 climate action plans. On the topic of solar energy, the time is now for schools to act on solar energy. 60 million metric tons of CO2 could be removed if all K-12 schools were 100% solar. There's been a 300% growth in solar capacity in K-12 schools since 2015. The solar incentives are available through the Inflation Reduction Act, and we are also surrounded by schools converting to solar power. Just down the road, Stevenson has installed solar panels on their roof, but if we would like to look at examples, or people to learn from just next door to us, D70 installed solar panels on Butterfield Elementary and Highland Middle School. And since 2014, they have saved $3.5 million by switching to solar energy. 3.5 million. Think of all the facilities and faculty that would benefit from that money instead of it going towards our energy cost. And last but not least, installing solar panels aligns with our school mission, daring. Dreamers endure. Us students dream of a better world with cleaner air, protected environment, and will do anything it takes to achieve it. We are aware that our district needs to be more active in reducing our carbon footprint. Our school buildings will literally become more resilient to energy price hikes. We are inquisitive about new forms of cost-worthy, efficient, green energy. We want to act nimbly and quickly to convert our school to solar. And lastly, we want to join the global movement to tackle climate change and become more sustainable.
To put our electricity usage into perspective, we used 457,658 kilowatt-hours in August. This is equivalent to releasing 392,000 pounds of carbon dioxide, powering 484 homes for an entire month, and burning 13,600 gallons of gas, which can operate 29 cars for a year. For sustainability, we want to follow the C acronym. We want our solution to have social equity, be economically sound, and be environmentally conscious. Solar, oh, it's out of order.
We had our student body answer a survey, and with their feedback, we were able to see that a majority believed that human activity plays a big role in climate change. And also believe that our district's decision to, oh, wrong side, also a large group either agree or strongly agree that climate change is affecting our community. And only 16 think that the school district is doing enough to reduce the effects of climate change. Our school also said that they strongly agree that the district should provide more, like different social, different energy resources for our climate. Our district's decision to allow comm-ed to turn off the AC on the school days when it is 90 or higher makes an uncomfortable and less efficient work environment. And with climate change, there will be more of these kind of days out, which would mean that the AC would be turned off more, which would just make students less effective and more uncomfortable.
Solar energy can greatly reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. According to Columbia University, an acre of solar panels can save up to 138 metric tons of carbon dioxide per year. Solar energy is both renewable and inexhaustible, meaning this project would be extremely sensible for future generations as well as ours. In 2023, we've seen some of the hottest days in history, and the temperatures are expected to continue to rise. Implementing solar power would not only help us do our part in combating climate change, but it would also drastically reduce the money we spend on hot days.
So the K-12 Action Plan states that schools have the most power, have the power to lower greenhouse gas emissions while also lowering the cost, and can reduce energy usage through renewable sources like solar energy. There are many incentives for solar installation through, like, the Inflation Reduction Act. Solar is low-risk and self-sufficient, and then you can sell excess to the grid or take from the grid. And then, next slide. This slide shows just electricity cost for August, which was $31,600.
And then, before we install solar panels, we do realize that there are some barriers that we need to face, one being the integrity of our roof. We understand that it is not ready, and we just want to know what needs, what steps need to be taken to get our roof prepared for solar panels so that when this does happen, it is as seamless as it can be. And then, secondly, we know that this is not on the top of the district priority list, but we want to know what steps can be taken to move it up so that it does not get pushed down and just forgotten about. We want this to gain the attention that it deserves. And then, we just wanted to leave you with this because we all, we all thought this was just an important quote to us. "To the young people listening who are passionate about protecting the climate and their communities but don't know where to start, look to your schools. There is work to be done. And to the adults listening who believe in the role that our education system must play in addressing climate change and preparing citizens to participate robustly in our democracy, find ways to partner with young people in your community. You have as much to learn from them as they do from you."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any questions for the students about their presentation?
No questions, but really good job, especially when you're, I don't think Ms. Khan is here, so you're going solo, so that's, that's really good. I did plant a few of your seedlings along the lake and also put some weed, so I know it's, it's really exciting work that you guys have done. And solar, I know, Don, you've brought up solar many times. I do know that we, it's on our list to talk through with Dan, and as we look at finances and policy above. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I agree. Great presentation. I very much enjoy seeing students get involved in not just the learning process, but the, the application process. So I'm delighted that you were here today. I asked very much the same questions. What are the impediments to putting in solar panels? And I'm glad you asked that question because that's really the sticking point. If we can remove the impediments to going forward with putting solar panels up, then, then we should be able to fly forward. I agree that there is money available, and, you know, I'm not exactly sure how we go about entertaining organizations, companies, whoever that installs solar panels, but I know that there are ways to do it on a cheap. There are also ways to do it where we own the panels, which has a greater bang for the buck in the long run. But at this point, I, I don't know what our savings could be until we investigate further. So once again, thank you to the students, and I challenge the administration to continue looking at this problem, and hopefully we'll continue to move forward.
I want to echo our appreciation, not just for the presentation, but the Ecos Club does a lot of really good work for the school, and it is very much appreciated and noticed the improvements that you have spearheaded, as well as the initiative you've taken in getting grants to make a lot of the things happen. I would encourage you, we have some really important discussions about our capital projects going on tonight. We also have a very important discussion going on about our levy, which has a lot to do with the budget and the revenue that we're able to capture to do capital projects. So if you are interested, I encourage you either to stay, you can watch the meeting online when you get home, or when it gets posted in a couple of days. But those conversations are all part of how we look at the capital projects and what we want to do and how much money we have to do it.
I also want to say thank you to the Ecos Group and to, especially the presenters here, and just comment that I can tell each one of you are personally passionate about this work, and I can tell that you live and breathe wanting to make sure that our climate is healthy, and that each one of us can do what we can. This summer, I installed solar panels on my home, and I am now selling electricity back to Commonwealth Edison. So the slide that you showed, there can be savings. It will take a long time for me to pay back what I invested, but for me, it's, it's both. It's a financial investment and an investment in the future of our planet. So I appreciate you advocating for Libertyville High School for District 128, and you have our commitment to continue to investigate this fully.
Okay. If we don't have any further comments, I think we're going to thank you once again, and then we're going to move on to our next agenda item. We do have for discussion, employment of employees. It looks like we had a couple to discuss. We've got a resignation. That one makes sense. That had to do with our, I think with the transition from the community ed program. Is that correct?
Teresa Pelagi was a part of our community ed and transitioned over to the new position, was doing amazing work, but had the opportunity to accept a position at a community college 10 minutes away from her home. So while the transition was smooth and she's doing excellent work, she really could not turn down a position that was so convenient for her, and her roots are in higher ed also. So we wish her well, and the job is posted.
Great, thank you. And it looks like we have two new assistant girls bowling coaches. Any questions about anything on the employment of employees?
Nope.
Seeing none, we're going to move on to educational tours. Again, I really appreciate the format for the submissions. Thank you to Dr. Sanchez, as well as to the stage players and the educational tour request that was submitted with all the information. Did we have any questions about the information presented? Okay, seeing none. We will have that on our agenda at the end of the month to approve at the board meeting. Next, I will turn it over to our administration to talk about the Fall 2023 Social and Emotional Survey.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight to discuss the Fall 2023 Student SEL Survey Results. I will be presenting with Larry Varn, Director of Equity and Inclusion, and also Dr. Aman Ellis Bowen, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, and I am Charlotte Beams, Director of Data and Assessment. There's going to be a lot of clicking. You can just click the whole thing on. Yep, thanks. So we administered this survey on August 29th, 2023, this year. This is the third time that we have administered this survey district-wide. The first time it was done was in the spring of 2022. The following school year, we moved it to the fall. So we did one in the spring of 2022, one in the fall of 2022, and we have found that the fall administration makes sense. It gives us time to work with students who, who we find need supports through this survey, through their survey responses. So we plan to continue that practice as we go. So we did move it up slightly this year. We gave it during the third week of school, and that, again, just allows us that much extra time to start working with our students whose results show that they need some support. We had an 88.9% response rate this year. We're proud of that. We always want to find ways to get that as close to 100 as possible, but we're proud of that rate. And something we're really excited about with this particular survey administration is it's the first time we were able to include transition pathways. So those participants also took the survey. They have a different schedule, and they're not always in their building. They're often at their job sites and internships, so their response rate looks a little lower because with LHS and VHHS, we have the students sitting in their classroom taking the, the survey, so it's a little easier to get that participation. But we are really excited to have, have given them the opportunity to also take the survey, so. So just a quick reminder, I know I've presented on Panorama survey results before, but just a quick reminder on how that works. Panorama sorts all of their topics, all of their questions into topics. This particular survey had 54 questions in eight topics, and on both the question and the topic level, Panorama reports the results as percent favorable. So that's going to be some of what we see in the slides to come. Most of the questions have five response choices, although there are times, there are some yes or no questions on this particular survey. Most of the time, it's the top two that are considered favorable responses, although there are times when it's only the top one and times when it's the top three, and that is all based on Panorama's research and case studies and all the work they do across the nation. So just a reminder, when looking at any result and showing percent favorable, the higher the number, the better. So sometimes questions are worded in different ways. During the past week, how often did you feel happy? Our favorable response will be one leaning toward more often versus during the past week, how often did you feel sad? A favorable response will be one that leans toward less often. So Panorama does that flip for us and reports on percent favorable. Bottom line, the higher the percent favorable, the better. So we always want to see high numbers, no matter how the questions are worded. So these are the topics that we had. These are the first four: challenging feelings, emotion regulation, growth mindset, and positive feelings, as well as how Panorama defines those topics. Go ahead. And the last four: self-efficacy, self-management, social awareness, and supportive relationships. We'll look at a couple of those topics in a little more depth, but we'll start with the overall results. So what you're seeing here are the results over the three survey administrations that I mentioned. So the green bars are from spring of 2022, the yellow bars are from fall of 2022, and the blue bars are from fall of 2023. And you are looking at the percent favorable for each topic. One thing to note here is that none of the, the topic favorabilities have decreased over the three administrations, so it's really exciting to see that things are improving, in some cases staying a little steady, but not going down. So really, really great to see. Our highest favorability consistently is in supportive relationships. We're really proud of that. And that topic does touch on students' relationships, both in school and outside of school, but we have a 90% favorability for that this year. And our greatest increase over the three survey administrations has been in challenging feelings, so really good to see that improving. One thing Panorama also does is they put the results in context by showing us how we compare to other students nationwide. And Panorama surveys are used all over the country and given to many, many, many students. So we get to see the percentile rankings. You can, I'll push it ahead once. And you can see there that for all of the topics, aside from one, we are in the 80th to 99th percentile. This helps to just give a little bit of context, so especially sometimes when we look at numbers that appear to be low. And certainly, it doesn't mean we don't want to improve those numbers and find ways to, to help our students in those areas, but it does just give us a perspective and a little context for what that means in comparing ourselves to students across the nation. So we're going to just deep dive really quickly into supportive relationships. I wanted to highlight this topic because it was our highest rated topic on this survey, so 90% favorable, and we are in the 99th percentile nationally in that topic. So really excited to see. You can just push the whole slide forward. So these are three of the questions that were in that topic. I just pulled out three to give you an idea of what those questions looked like and how our students answered. These were yes or no questions, so yes was the favorable answer, no was the not favorable answer. So you can see there how our students responded and how they're feeling about the support that they have, again, both inside and outside school. So really exciting to see that. And now we're going to deep dive into self-efficacy. So Panorama defines self-efficacy as how much students believe they can succeed in achieving academic outcomes. So these questions were all about students' confidence related to their academics. This was our second lowest percent favorability, although it did increase 1% from last year, and we are in the 79th percentile nationally for this topic. That was our lowest percentile ranking. So just a couple questions, again, to give you an idea of the types of questions students were asked and how they answered. So this is a question, how confident are you that you can complete all the work that is assigned in your classes? And on the slide, you can see the full response breakdown. You can see that the two, the two choices at the bottom that they're showing quite confident and extremely confident were the favorable choices, and that was an 81% favorable response. So 81% of our students saying they are either quite confident or extremely confident that they can complete all the work that is assigned in their classes. And another question, how confident are you that you will remember what you learned in your current class next year? And you can see that the, the responses, that graph has changed a little. That's only a 35% favorable response for that particular question. So only 35% of students answering quite confident or extremely confident that they will remember what they learned next year. So that just gives you a brief idea of that topic, and we're actually going to deep dive into self-efficacy again a little bit later in the presentation, and Mr. Varn is going to lead us through some of that. So I wanted to also show some disaggregated data for some of our student groups. This is always a focus when we give this survey, to do some of these comparisons, and especially now that we have three years' worth of data to look at to monitor how the differences are changing. So what we're looking at in this graph, and you're going to see graphs very similar to this on the next few slides, imagine that the zero line is how the total responses came in. So the total responses, if, if we're looking at self-efficacy, I believe it was 61 or 62% favorable, so that zero line represents that overall percent favorable for everybody who took the survey. And then the bars represent the difference from the total responses for the particular student group that we are looking at. So in this case, we're looking at our English learners and how their responses differed compared to the overall total responses. And we, again, are seeing three years of data. So as we put these bars next to each other, we can start to look for places where we see trends. Sometimes we see that the, the, the changes are jumping around, and we can't maybe put our finger on, on a trend, but the main thing is that we want to see all of those bars getting closer and closer to that zero line over the years. So we are especially looking at places where we have big gaps for our student groups. For English learners, we've got a pretty large gap in social awareness. We had a large gap in self-efficacy last year that We had a large gap in self-efficacy last year that improved a lot. This year, we hope that that is a trend and will continue to improve. As we continue to get more data, we will continue to track that. So we'll look at a couple other student groups. This is our students who participate in our fee waiver program. So our low-income students. And we see some of the same places where students are answering less favorably and where we're seeing some larger gaps. So again, we see a pretty large gap there in social awareness. And the concern there is that that seems to be growing. The trend is that that gap is getting bigger, not smaller. So that's something we need to pay attention to. And self-efficacy, self-efficacy is going to continue to come up in the presentation. But we see there that we have a pretty large gap for those students. Next. These are our students receiving special services. So again, we are seeing some some larger and larger differences as we go through. And again, for our students receiving special services, we're seeing some places where those gaps are increasing or or staying steady. And what we want is for those to decrease. So, excuse me. So we, there are some places here where we need to really put a focus and and focus in on those populations in specific areas. Next one. This is for our Black or African-American students. Again, I'm going to point your eye to self-efficacy. It's the gap is growing by a big margin. And 16-point difference response from our African-American students versus the total overall. Next. This is our Hispanic students. And again, you see what's kind of popping out is self-efficacy. You can go to the next one. And then our multiracial students. This one is a little interesting. It's jumping around a little more, not as easy to put our finger on trends that we're seeing. So we'll have to keep monitoring this and see how things are changing over time. Not as big of a gap in self-efficacy, but it is still there. Looking here at growth mindset, positive feelings and emotion regulation for some of the the largest gaps. Next. So there were also some, again, we're going to come back to self-efficacy again. But before we do that, we're going to look at the free response data. Students were asked three free response questions on this survey. And on the next slides, you're going to see two slides per question. The first thing is going to be a word cloud. This is something that Panorama generates for us. So it's a little rough. Panorama can't decipher between a response that references college versus college applications or schoolwork, one word versus schoolwork, two words. So it's a little rough, which is why we also code the data. So the second part of of each question will look at the coded responses and how we'll do a comparison between 2022 and 2023. So this was the first question, thinking about everything in your life right now. What makes you feel the happiest? And here's the word cloud that Panorama generated for us. So those big, bold words are the things that came up the most. And then our data team coded it. And you'll see on the left side, we're looking at the top seven responses from this most recent survey compared to how those respond, what the top seven from 2022. So we see that the same things tend to come up as the students, as the things that are making students the happiest. And student, this does specify right now, in your life right now, what makes you happiest. So things that get coded as athletics, students are talking about their fall sports. Students, of course, are talking about their peer relationships and their families, some of their hobbies, and of course, our pets. Next one. Thinking about everything in your life right now, what feels hardest for you? So you see schoolwork comes up, college, college apps, homework. That's again Panorama's word cloud. Next. And these are the coded responses. So the the top response coming through is school. We see just the amount of work. We see balancing responsibilities, a lot of the same things coming up over and over. Next slide. And this is my favorite question on this particular survey because it leads to some things that are actionable, almost on an immediate basis, that that our teachers and our staff who are working with students on a daily basis can do. And of course, brings up bigger things too, that will take more time to implement. But there are some things that our teachers can do right away. So you can see what the students said. You do see one of the big words there is great job. And you can go to the next slide. That is the top response to this question. Students saying, we're already doing well and you're doing a good job supporting us. We don't need anything more. So we do love to see that. And that showed too, in the supportive relationships category, that students answered. There are things, though, that students are asking for. Be understanding, be helpful, be kind and caring came up this year. It didn't come up in the top seven, but it was in the top 10. And last year, it was in, it was the sixth one, check in. Students just want to be checked in with. And it's a pretty simple, quick thing that when teachers know that, that they can implement pretty, pretty easily. So we're going to look now at how the results are being used. And we will look at it on at three, on three levels, individual students, teachers in classrooms and schools and districts, schools and the district. So for individual students, the Panorama survey is not anonymous. The results get connected back to the students. And that is so that if we see responses that are concerning, those students can be reached out to. So one of the things that happens almost right away is within the Panorama system, students are color-coded using the scale that you see there on the right. A student who is color-coded as red means that they have not shown a strength in any of the topics covered on the SEL survey. So those are the students that are going to be reached out to first by their LST. The LSTs also read all of the free responses in problem-solving meetings. And as a backup to that, when the data team codes the free responses, we are also on the lookout for concerning things that our students say and remaining in touch with our buildings when we see that to ensure that that didn't get missed. So we kind of have a two-part system to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks. Many of the students who are who are identified through this process are are already in frequent contact with their LST. There are students who who we've already identified as needing some extra support. And those who are identified newly through this process begin meeting with their social worker or counselor right away. The learning support teams use the information to establish some baseline data for each of their students. And students begin meeting with the members of their LST to discuss the responses, to provide opportunities for support and to establish relationships. And I am really, really proud to say that the outreach efforts by our LSTs at both buildings began just two days after the launch of this survey. So they were completely on top of making sure that those kids who who showed up red or who gave a concerning free response got immediate attention. And those efforts will continue. Team directors are also using Power School and piloting Unified Insights to monitor the progress of interventions provided to the students discussed in teams. Aman, before we go on to this, did you add anything to that part with individual students?
So again, I just want to again say how thankful I am for the members of the LST team for being able to first and foremost, go through the data and take a look at both the free responses as well as those students that were color-coded red for not reporting, as well as the students that were color-coded yellow that indicates that they reported a strength, but it was less than half than the topic. As Charlotte stated, most of the students who were identified were students who we were already seeing through the LST. However, there were some students who were brand new to the LST as well as utilizing their services. So right now, we have some, some of the LSTs, not all of them, but most of them who are beginning to create a practice where they are continuing to progress monitor those students, whether it is continuing to have those check-ins, those one-to-ones. But then we also have some of our LST teams who are progress monitoring during problem-solving meetings using our new product insights. So very grateful for the work that they've been doing.
Can I ask, I know that you were very encouraged about the the new platform and how it could improve tracking services. Do you have like a gut feeling? I think this is the first survey we've done since implementing the platform. Do you have any early indication if it's going to be doing what you were expecting it to do?
So again, there, the teams are really just going through finishing the training. I believe the last training that they took was maybe a week or two ago. However, we do have some, what I would like to say, superstars that are utilizing and they are able to see everything for students all at once instead of going through, you know, different products to look at it. So that's been really good. And they have been able to see exactly where they may need some assistance in outside of the SEO component that we're looking at.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question to while you're on the topic? That's interesting to see some of this information. But something you said kind of sparked a question in my mind. As you said, some of the students that may have come up with a red color were kind of through the check-in, I mean, they're in that process already. So when you look at how those students scored before versus now, given that they're already in sort of some check-in process, did you see that they're improving?
So yes and no. Some of the students who are coming up have, are receiving some very comprehensive services. And so for those students, we kind of see the same concerns for those students. However, we did have some, some students who we have seen identify, whether it be through the free responses or the red, and they've gradually moved to yellow and then some to green. So it really just depends on the individual student.
I also want to comment that this is a really strong tool, but it's an annual survey. And the kind of progress monitoring that our LST team uses, they have additional measures to show progress month by month or semester by semester. So while I think it's really important that we look at all of our school-wide data and we act upon the individual information we get, I know that Aman and the LSTs are using additional tools to measure resisting impulsivity or, you know, maybe on an anxiety or depression scale or something like that. So please know that the LSTs use this tool and other tools to monitor progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it also that 25% of the respondents, I'm assuming, are freshmen? So it's the first time they're taking this survey.
Yes, so we've had, even within the LST, and I'll get to that in a couple of slides, where we talked about the incoming freshmen as well as the students who we currently have. And we gave the survey, survey pretty early in August. And we had some discussion as to, did we really capture what was authentically going on? Because it's still early, everybody's still happy, ready to come back to school. It's not a lot of concerns. And so we talked, we've had some conversations about pushing it down. We've also had some conversations, as Dr. Herman stated, that right now, we only give this tool annually. And so we've had some conversations about how do we continue to progress using Panorama? So can we look at the check-in option that they have? Can we look at having this again in the spring or the winter and spring? So with also keeping in consideration the survey fatigue. And then also too, and I'll speak to this in another slide. But we also had students who, even through our concerted efforts of getting them engaged and ready for the SEL, who really did not take this survey seriously. And so even as we were having those one-to-ones with our students, they're like, oh, wow, I didn't think that. I'll be called, you know, down or this would be taken seriously. So those are additional things we have to take into consideration.
Could someone, oh, could someone please address discrepancy I'm seeing? And I don't know if I'm just reading the data incorrectly. But if you go into the teens where you're able to see kind of like the differentials between that that zero line, above, there's the key indicating the semester and the year the surveys were given. And I'm, is one of them missing? Is spring of 23 missing or was one miscategorized?
Now, so the first time we gave this survey was in spring of 2022. So it would have been the 21, 22 school year. And then we realized that we just didn't have enough time to effectively use that data. So we did it in the fall for the next school year, which was the same calendar year.
So now, so while we have three data points here, now it's being only implemented yearly in the fall.
Correct, yes.
Any clarification?
Okay, next. So this data has been presented to teachers and staff at all three of our buildings at LHS, VHS and Transition Pathways. And in each of those sessions, we customize the presentation for the particular building. So there's a presentation for each building. And in those sessions, we not only look at that building's data and and what's happening with their students, but we also discuss strategies that teachers can implement on an immediate basis in their classrooms to help their students. And sometimes those discussions, teachers, you know, really come up with some of their own strategies and ideas when they see what has come through. So I pulled out a few of the top, these are not the same top seven you saw before. I pulled out a few that are actionable for our teachers. Of course, some, some give less work. So that it's going to come up from our students and something to think about, but not, not as quick and easy as offering a check-in. And one of the things that we talked about is during the COVID years, teachers were doing a lot of check-ins. And that has little by little decreased now that things are back to feeling more normal. But students are still requesting that. So, you know, it's a pretty easy thing to implement, get to know us more. Students want to feel that they are known and aren't just, you know, known as you're my math student, you're my English student, but that their teachers know them. So we discuss these things in, in the sessions with the teachers and and how there can be some immediate impact. Obviously, there's, there's a bigger, more global impact and things that we need to implement that will take more time. But some of these are things that our teachers can do pretty quickly. So we have those discussions and teachers leave the sessions with those ideas and some other ideas that they generate.
Can I ask a question? Just to get an idea, how does this look? Like who's having these, when we're looking at teachers in classrooms, who's having the conversations? Who are they able to see students' names so that this can be absolutely pinpointed to certain students?
With our teachers, we do more of a global look at the data for their particular building. And we do it through Lunch and Learns. So we did Lunch and Learns at LHS and VHS. I lead those along with, at Libertyville, it is Lisa Davis, the data coach there. And at Vernon Hills, it is Abby Gutzmer, who's the data coach there. So we lead those sessions. At Transition Pathways, I led a morning breakfast session. I was, works better with their schedule. So we lead the sessions. We have a presentation to kind of guide and look at specific parts of the data that popped that were interesting or that really stuck out to us. And that sometimes looks a little different between the two buildings. And then often, the the teachers in those sessions have certain questions or certain ideas that that they want to dive into more. So if we do four Lunch and Learns in a row, none of them look exactly the same. We use kind of the presentation to guide the the conversation, but we really let it also be a bit of an open conversation. But right now, we are showing it on a global scale and not a student-by-student scale to teachers.
So have you gotten any information that this information is helping, that has made a change in the day-to-day kind of existence or experience?
So we, well, on an, on an overall sense, we see that that the the topic favorability is improving over time. So we know that that things that we are implementing are working. This is, this particular survey, the data is new. The Lunch and Learns just happened last week. So, so we don't have any tracking on on that. And that again, comes down to conversations about should we be giving this more often or doing a little bit more? or doing a little bit more of some uh modified shorter version so that we can can track more consistently and more often if our efforts are having an impact. But we have, as Aman said, gotten a lot of feedback about survey fatigue. And uh so it's something that we are uh thinking about and and trying to problem solve how we can get the most useful data from our students uh without the survey fatigue.
I think one other thing I'm hearing in your question is to make sure that we're checking in with teachers at the end of the Lunch and Learns to see, did you find this information helpful and and what's the likelihood you're going to take it back? So we could be using some of our qualtrics to say, here's the intended learning outcome at the end of it or a week later, did you find that Lunch and Learn helpful?
Yes.
I do think that we saw significant attendance. So I think word is out from last year how helpful the presentation was, um not only in helping to understand the data, but to give some tips and tricks on what to do next and differently. Um so there was very high attendance at all three sites. Um so that's one positive indicator that teachers are finding these sessions useful.
I did notice that the, even though it was slight, the participation in the survey has decreased consistently each time it's been given. So I we have to take that into consideration.
Okay, for the next one, I'm going to turn it back over to Aman.
All right, so um for this one, this is uh how we are utilizing the data um within our schools and districts, um within our buildings as well as throughout the district. And I want to say that um for this particular slide, and you can just go ahead and just hit everything. Um these are just highlights of um how we're utilizing it. Um and of course, um because each school has its own culture, um they are use utilizing it um in different ways based on their student body. Um so at LHS, they uh really uh take a look at this um information, especially with a focus on ninth grade, uh with our linked crew and um utilizing uh the Panorama Panorama um resources um and lessons to implement with um our ninth grade students. Um and then also, we are utilizing um the Panorama Panorama data in regards to our variety of our student groups um to um continue to augment our services for those cohorts. Uh at VHS, uh they have been um utilizing this information for programming for the student body. Uh so pretty much almost every week, if not every other week, um there is a focus uh within that building in which they are um utilizing not only the data, but then also some other tools that they have uh captured information for their student body. Um this has included mentoring, um different um activities that they do um through uh prevention and wellness that's specific to uh the needs of the uh student body. Um in addition to that, they also, the Equity Coordinator u- utilizes this data. She is having um student focus groups as well as teacher focus groups um when she's talking about or um uh uh having those kind of equity uh walks and equity chats. And then again, um VHS, uh V Vernon Hills is also utilizing this data um for our different cohorts of students as well too. And um I wanted to also mention that we do have um teachers as well as staff that um once data is presented um through uh the Lunch and Learns, they do go through um and uh utilize Panorama lessons and surveys. Um especially within our LSTs, they also utilize that as well too with our students. This is me again. All right, so um I wanted to also begin to talk about the connection between Panorama um data, not only just for this year, but our also our data from last year and how we plan to utilize this. So there are three targets that we are looking at this year. Um our first target is looking at exploring programming um by visiting uh different school district schools and organizations um to see how they, what programming they have specific to um some of the areas that we've identified. So stuff, whether it be self-efficacy, whether it be challenging emotions, we want to see what type of programming that they have um implemented that has been successful as well as sustainable uh within their district. Um we are also utilizing this um data to begin planning for our Equity and Well-being Student Advisory Committee uh that will go through the planning this year and with implementation of Fall 2024. So that way, we can have some student voice as they look at this um data and begin to share with us uh different um activities and services that we can provide to the student body. Um and then um last but not least, um we are again looking at how we can begin to do some alignment um with the data and the survey at multiple port points throughout the year instead of just looking at it annually, whether it be check-ins, whether it be um providing another additional uh survey in the spring, um but just looking at how we can capture that just to continue to do that progress monitoring.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, may.
Before you go, it's kind of in line with what Cara was asking, but in all of these activities, how, what are you doing to capture the voice of the 10% who did not participate? Because they they could be the ones who need the most help.
So that is again a great a great question. So one of the things that um is being done with that 10%, uh they are captured in uh those groups, those individual student groups where the LST will continue to monitor, they're continuing to do the check-in. Um those are students who we will probably bring on as well too to um be part of that planning for that equity and well-being, um to have a full understanding of um why they may have uh responded the way they did for a re- a free response and or re- um responded for um no strength. Um and then also to um incorporating um that as much as possible when we are um looking at those multiple checkpoints, that is going to be crucial. But again, um we are utilizing not only Panorama, but we're looking at insights as well as there's um different screeners and different other assessment tools that we're looking at for our students as well.
Just to clarify, you're talking about the 10% of the students who didn't take the survey?
Oh.
So I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Because we know who didn't take.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do the LSTs follow up with those students? Like why isn't that 99%?
So that is um a question that I will have to take back and ask if we followed up with that too. Um but I just want to point out, um even this year, we did videos. We sent student emails out. Um we um looked at a variety of different vehicles to get students to participate. Some of our students um opted out um based on whatever reasons um per their parent of not taking the SEL um survey. And then we just had other students that just didn't. But I will have to follow up with if we followed up with the LST.
And um one thing the the survey team is looking at is how we could potentially implement a makeup system for surveys. So currently, what we do for students is we use a modified bell schedule. And so they have a certain amount of time within the day where they are taking the survey. But students who are absent, um we don't have a plan in place for them right now. So that is something that we are looking at, um how we how we can implement something uh for those students who may have missed it simply because they were absent from school that day. Okay. So um in addition to uh what's happening with the Health and Well-being uh team, the District's Equity and Inclusion Team is also using uh some of this data to guide some of their work. Uh so uh we we've talked about self-efficacy a couple of times throughout the slideshow, and we're going to bring that specific topic back now, um especially in looking at how various demographic groups responded and the gaps that we saw in that particular topic for many of our groups. So on the coming slides, we're going to investigate that um a little bit further. And um I'm gonna do the next two slides, I believe, and then Mr. Varne will take over for me. So we're looking at slightly different information here than what we saw before. So on the previous graphs where we saw um the bars above and below the zero line, we were looking at a comparison to total responses. When we look at total responses, the group that we are looking at is also included in total responses. This is a little different here. Here we are looking at the student group as compared to students who do not fall into that group. So for instance, the first set of bars, the yellow are our non-English learning students and the blue is our English learners. So here we're comparing just the favorability of self of the self-efficacy topic in various groups. The total uh response uh favorability was 63%. So we can see how those groups differ, but mainly we want to look at the difference between students' responses who fall into that group and students who do not. So we're seeing on this slide our English learners, our fee waiver participants and our students receiving special services. And you see some differences there uh with the population that does not fall into those groups. And on the next slide, we'll look at the various races. Um so uh looking at our Black or African-American students is the yellow bar far below the total response and far below um their all all other races. Uh and then our Hispanic and multiracial um students also um are below that total response and and below their white and Asian peers. So those are the same groups that we looked at before, just in a slightly uh different way. So this has to do um just with that self-efficacy topic. And I'm going to let uh Mr. Varne uh take over from here.
Thank you, Charlotte. And so what we're really seeing and what we're really looking at um from our Equity Team's standpoint is our marginalized groups um and how they are responding in this particular survey around self-efficacy. Um let's start with reminding you about the definition that um Panorama gave us for self-efficacy and and why that's really key for us in our work. They define self-efficacy as how much students believe that they can succeed in achieving academic outcomes. That is really the mindset of the student in their learner profile. I believe that I can, as a student in this class, in this school, in this district, succeed academically. Um and so when we look at those disparities uh between those marginalized groups, it's concerning for us as an Equity Team. Um so we want to go through some data points to really reiterate um some of the changes and shifts that we're coming to as a district as it relates to our heterogeneous classes. Um this is important for us because anytime we can um reinforce the rationale for this shift that is that we're working on this year for implementation in 2024, we want to be able to do that um because we're seeing this uh surface in those results that we have. So when we look at our English learners, that that first um subgroup there, we have looked at before this data already. We know the percentage of the overall demographics that this particular group makes up um in comparison to um non-English learners. But when we look at our Strive and Learn a Course, we see that they make up a significantly larger portion of that Strive and Learn a Course. And that Strive and Learn a Course, again, is one when we think about our diagonal levels, it's where we place students who have demonstrated some some challenges and and needs for additional support. Um and so when we um looked at that bar graph again, uh the comparison between English learners uh and non-English learners, they are four points below um students who we don't consider to be non-English learners. Um and so that's saying that if I'm a if I'm an English learner, that I believe that I'm less able to succeed in my academic outcomes. The next um marginalized group is the other fee waiver students. Similar to our English learner data, um you'll see that they make up a a small portion of our overall population. Uh but when we look at that Strive and Learn a Course, significantly more. Um so even though that, even though it's only 8.5% of our overall population, when we look at that level of course, 30, 34% um of our fee waiver students are enrolled in striving. They make up 34% of our Strive and Learn a Courses. And then when we uh compare that to students who are not receiving fee waivers, looking specifically at uh self-efficacy, uh they're nine points lower than than those students who are not considered to be uh than those students who are non-fee-wavered students. And now we're gonna look at that breakdown by race and ethnicity. I'm sorry, special services. Um these are our students who um who have IEPs. Um they make up 10.8% of our overall population. When we think about and apply that to our Strive and Learn a Courses, um again, over it uh they represent 36.1% of the Strive and Learn a Course. Um and so when we, when those students reported on their ability to um succeed academically, they they demonstrated 13 points lower um competence than their students not receiving special services. And finally, we want to look at the results by race and ethnicity. Um looking at our African-American and our Latino students, um our African-American students make up 1.9% of our overall population and our Latino students make up 11.5% of our overall population. When we take those same subgroups and look at look at their makeup of the Strive and Learn a Courses, we've seen this data already. Um and so when we, when we look at the SEL survey results, we see that our non-Latin, our Latino students are demonstrating uh seven points lower than our um non-Latino students. And our African-American students showed 16 um points lower than um our non-black students. Um so we see those gaps. Uh we see those gaps. And when we think about the work that we're doing with heterogeneous classes, it really reinforces why this needs to occur. Because, next slide. The research has shown us uh and says that when students are separated, they have a lower perception of their abilities. Our data reinforces that research, um that our students who are uh EL students, our students who are receive special services, our students who are on fee waivers and our Black and Brown students view themselves as less capable academically in these in these separated classes that um that we have made up with Strive and Learn a Courses. And so we are working on heterogeneous classes um to open up more access um for our our students um using our Accelerated Placement Act and our partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools. And so we expect self-efficacy to improve because of these efforts um beginning in that uh 2024 year when we implement the heterogeneous classes at the ninth grade. And so we really just want to make sure that as we look at this data and we analyze where our students are, that we're applying it to the work that we're doing. And we really believe that this reinforces the vision of District 128 um in order to provide a high-quality instruction for all students and provide that uh self-efficacy that students uh require at all levels.
So um that is about all for for now. Uh even though we looked at a lot of data, uh there is much, much more. So um so two things, uh the QR code here will take you to a PDF where you can see every question that was asked on the survey, um not the free responses, the Likert scale questions, as well as the response uh breakdown. So not just percent favorable, uh but also exactly how the students responded. So we saw a couple of those slides earlier where it showed um what students actually said in terms of the the five choices. Um and also, there is a a report that um was attached um to uh the Board Docs uh that goes into much greater detail on on all of the topics. So we we looked at just a couple tonight, uh but there is, there is more. Um so um as you are uh reading over the additional information, if if any further questions come up, please do feel free to let us know and we will ensure that we get your questions answered.
And I just want to amplify your point that that is available in Board Docs. It's public information, so it is not um just for the board members to review, but anybody in the public who would like to look at it, go to our website, go to Board Docs, it's public information. Okay, um so I'd like to open it up for some questions. Um what questions do we have? I know we asked questions as they came up, so it's possible that we don't have any further questions. Don, was there anything you wanted to clarify? I don't want to forget you out there in virtual land. I'm gonna assume that that's a no unless you pop back. Um I also want to take the opportunity, one of the things that we were strongest at um was uh the supportive relationships. And to the extent that that's happening. And to the extent that that's happening in our buildings, I want to be sure to acknowledge the teachers and the support staff that are engaging with students and making them feel like they have a trusted adult in the building. That is definitely something that we want to acknowledge and show appreciation for. Also, really want to give everybody on the team who participated props. This is a lot of information, and it's not always straightforward to review. So thank you for your presentation and for fielding our questions while you were trying to present. So if we don't have anything further, I think we're going to move on. We had the ISB Resolutions Committee Report to review. I think what... Should we move it or should we?
Well, there's only a few for us to review, so that's true.
Well, I guess we could see how the discussion goes, and if we need to have additional conversation with Jim present, we could always add it later. I do want to direct us to discuss the items that Jim, as our delegate, will be voting on as opposed to the ones that aren't going to be presented to vote on. So that is, I'm going through the report, I'll find the page number to direct everyone to. And again, this is in the Board Packet.
Starts at about 11.
Thank you. Yes, so the, thank you, the 10... Here I am. Okay, I'm caught up. So the resolutions that will be voted on at the ISB Delegate Meeting in November start on page 11. Were there any that Board members wanted to discuss? That's page 11 through 13.
I didn't have any questions about any of the five resolutions. I was willing to accept the committee's recommendations on each of them.
Okay, thank you.
And I could hear you fine earlier, but my headphones died, and they are my microphone right now, so I was recharging them.
No worries, no worries. Just, I didn't want to forget about you, just because you're joining us virtually. Okay.
Agreed with the recommendations from the committee.
Thank you.
I'd like to give a shout out to Fremont School District, even though their resolution will not be presented.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's great to see schools all across the state, including our neighbors, participating in the resolution process. Were there any other comments before we move on? Okay, so it looks like we don't have anything to alert Jim to, in contrary to the Resolution Committee recommendations. So we will move on to future agenda items for P and P specifically. Were there any not listed in the public documents that we wanted to bring to a discussion? Okay, seeing none, I think we're going to take a very brief recess, just a five-minute recess before we move on to F and F because our Facilities and Finance Committee, I think, will be substantial. And I want to give everybody a chance to stretch their legs, use the restroom, and then we will adjourn the P and P at 6:45, and we'll get started with F and F at 6:50.
We're going to get everybody back so that we can get started ASAP.
Really, I just needed to open this super crinkly thing.
Eli, do you have a laser pointer?
Are we good to go? Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone from the public wishing to address the board to approach the microphone. Okay, seeing none, we are going to move right on to items for discussion. We have an LHS cafeteria project update.
Thank you. We are going to start this with Dr. K is going to kick us off, and then we're going to transition to Mike Henderson, who is our architect from STR, and then Mark and I are here for moral support. So give me one second, let me share this screen again. All right, Tom, take it away.
Yeah, thank you. I was very pleased to be invited here this evening just to talk a little bit about some of the reasons why it is important for us to consider redesigning the LHS student cafeteria and staff cafeteria at this time, why this project is so important, and some of the benefits of this project, not just to the facilities and the infrastructure of the school, but to our students in terms of their health, their happiness while at school, and ultimately to the way it impacts their overall achievement as Wildcats. So if we wouldn't mind, Dan, moving forward a slide, you want me to just say click when I, you know, my imaginary remote here? But our current situation, and you probably are looking at that and not sure, is that the actual cafeteria, or is that a picture that Tom found from an archive? Because our cafeteria was built in the 1950s, and it is now 70 years old. The equipment in the kitchen is at the far end of its life expectancy. And while we can replace equipment periodically, the way that the kitchen was designed was designed for a lot of frozen food. And for minimal food, there was students, you know, you would get kind of one meal option a day. There was not a lot of variety and a lot of choice, nor was there a lot of consideration for student dietary restrictions and cultural needs. So the equipment and the design of the kitchen is at the far end of its life expectancy. And the focus of the design initially, while was not for ADA compliance, nor was it one that was focused on environmental sustainability, two sort of bedrock values that we have. And you've heard our students speak directly tonight about environmental sustainability being a focus for them in their generation. And technology has advanced over those 70 years, allowing a new kitchen to be much more energy efficient and much more efficient in design. Speaking about design, one thing that's really important is our cafeteria currently is sort of, if you think of like when you play a video game, or when you want to, you get a free software, there's always stuff that they show you, but it's locked. Right now, we have a lot of staff who are talking about the way we use time in our school and thinking about different ways we might be able to use time to better serve our student needs and our class needs, our staff instructional needs. But we feel like there's a big lock on that. And that's because our current student capacity in our cafeteria is only approximately 380 students, which in a school of about 1,850, we let our seniors go out for lunch, but we need to have four lunch periods a day in order to meet all of our student needs. And it's not just about the size of, you know, sometimes people say, well, if you get rid of your round tables and put more efficient tables in, like rectangle tables, you can put more bodies in the cafeteria. And we could probably put more bodies in the cafeteria, but the servary and the way the kitchen is designed, we would not be able to get all the students in to purchase their food and out in the 45-minute period. So really, we are constrained. The cafeteria design is constraining and impacting our bell schedule and really forces us to have four lunch periods, which then limits what we can do in terms of creative thinking around the uses of time as we would consider those schedule changes moving forward. So our goal would be to have a cafeteria redesigned that would effectively allow us to serve at least 450 students during a lunch period. That would enable us to consider flexible uses of time that might create three lunch periods in the day instead of four. The other thing is that, as you know, our courtyard contains a, or excuse me, our cafeteria contains a very large courtyard, which is very nice, and we utilize it for about six weeks of the school year. And so that courtyard, unfortunately, for as nice as it is, to have the ability to have a courtyard for students to go outside, it is a big space that is not utilized throughout the year. And as we think about trying to expand our cafeteria and some of the creative options that Mike Henderson and the STR team can do, capturing that courtyard space, it would be essential for us. Our cafeteria is also currently insufficient for the full range of Quest Food service options. You heard some very compelling proposals from Quest Food a few years ago about the types of services that they can provide our students, the types of food options they can provide, and some of the sort of supplemental services like the coffee bar, the grab-and-go stations, and some of the fresh food options that we have in place at Vernon Hills High School, but that are not in place at Libertyville due to some of the design constraints of our kitchen and our servary. And then, as I mentioned, some of our ADA compliance needs are very difficult to meet due to the current design of our kitchen. So this is our current situation, and we've had a team of about 25 individuals, professionals, and members of our staff working for several months to talk about different options for our cafeteria. Dan, if we would click forward. Sorry, the font here is small, but the goals of the redesign, obviously, first and foremost to create a welcoming space for all students to eat and socialize. And what we really need to think about is moving from the idea of a cafeteria just being a place where students enter, are served food, and eating very quickly and efficiently. Our students, as we know, are here now at our school from early morning until late afternoon and sometimes late in the evening. We want also our students to feel safe and comfortable in the space, and we really want to think of our student cafeteria as kind of our town square or our central market and to have a student union type of feel. We want it to be a multi-use space for many student events, not just for students' eating needs. And obviously, we want to increase the dining efficiency and the capacity to about 450 students, while however, kind of keeping this as the space where all students gather. We think about, if you're in a building for eight to 10 hours a day, for our students, they do not have spaces that are really their own. They go to teacher classrooms, they go to gyms and to locker room facilities. But really, it is the student cafeteria that is a space for our students where they can relax, where they can be comfortable, where they can socialize with their friends in ways that are on their terms and not being directed by adults. So we really want to think about the student-centered design and the option of our students to use this in a way that not only meets their needs for their physical health in terms of the type of food we can serve, but also in their social, emotional health as well. Part of that is us creating a lot of natural light in that space and working to, even though we would propose to fill in the courtyard and capture that space, we want to preserve as much natural light as possible. We also want to preserve the student ability to have We also want to preserve the student ability to have multiple types of seating. And some students want to sit at large tables with many friends, other students want to sit at small tables. Some students enter the cafeteria and want to sit alone. We have students with sensory needs who look for quieter spaces in the cafeteria. And our redesign would enable us to meet a much wider perspective of student needs, both from their physical health in what we offer food-wise, but in social and emotional health as well. Obviously, we would like to replace our old kitchen equipment and add some of the new fresh food stations and coffee bar options that our kids value so much today. And really design this with principles of environmental sustainability. We had a committee of students representing ECOS come and speak to our team of professionals all about reusable materials to reduce the amount of food waste and paper waste in our cafeteria, to create recycling stations, and to lower energy consumption as part of our cafeteria redesign. Click. So just quickly, as we seek to redesign our cafeteria, we are looking to incorporate a lot of natural light and green features into the space. We're trying to design for the different types of food that would be served, the different cultural needs of students that eat in our cafeteria, as well as students with gluten-free and other types of dietary restrictions, as well as ADA needs. And to design our servery and kitchen for maximum employee efficiency, and again, for student movement in and out of that space. When we redesign the kit, the kitchen and the cafeteria, it creates some, some needs, as well as some opportunities for some ancillary projects. And so one of those ancillary projects is what we're calling a learning stairs. The learning stairs would essentially extend our cafeteria seating into a more informal space for students. This is a picture of learning stairs at Nutria High School. Many other high schools in our area, as well as middle and elementary schools, are incorporating learning stairs. These are multi-use spaces where students can gather informally during free periods. It becomes kind of like an open resource space for them, a place where they can eat, where they can socialize, where we can also hold formal academic classes, where we can hold formal school programs, and where we can kind of use this as a center of student life and learning in our building. This project does have the option of incorporating learning stairs in the center of our building. It would expand our student seating capacity for lunch, about a hundred to a hundred and twenty students. And we could incorporate a significant amount of natural light through skylights that would be built over the stairwell as well. The new staff cafeteria would also be incorporated. We would be eliminating an old staff cafeteria that is sort of isolated and incorporating it into the design of the new student cafeteria, creating much, a multi-use space when it's not being used for staff cafeteria, could be used for other formal programs, as well as to increase the supervision of our cafeteria, sort of indirect supervision, by relocating the staff cafeteria closer to our students. And then also, this project would require us to potentially take out the bathrooms that are old and outdated in the student cafeteria, causing us to need to redesign some of the bathrooms that are across the hall from the cafeteria. And that has been incorporated, but renovating student bathrooms is, as you know, an important project for us. And this cafeteria redesign would also allow us to meet some of the bathroom redesigns that we're also attempting to do. Click. I'm gonna just stop right now with some of the big picture overview of this before we get into some of the more specific design and budget questions that STR and Dan Stanley and Mark Koopman will present. Just wanna know if there's any specific questions for me.
No questions, but thank you for taking the feedback from last time and developing all the goals and I think making a really strong case for your students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the design that we're gonna see tonight ensure that we can go from four to three lunch periods?
Yes. The design that we have, there are several options. And some of the options would enable us to put more students in the cafeteria. Some of the options would only enable us to put more students in the cafeteria if we redesigned the furniture to be long rectangular tables. So we'll kind of parse that out as we go.
Okay. Is, do all versions of the redesign give Quest the opportunity to offer the same food options that are currently being offered at Vernon Hills High School?
Yes.
Is it permitted to give our creative thoughts regarding design at this time?
Maybe just hold till you see some of the actual.
I guess what I mean is during the presentation to Tom and Mark.
Mark loves to hear feedback.
Okay.
He really does. I sincerely appreciate STR how thoughtful and responsive they are to our feedback. There's been, we've had six meetings so far, all of them upwards of ninety minutes to two hours in length, with all kinds of stakeholders giving feedback that have been incorporated into designs. So we're really fortunate to work with Mark and his team. I hope you find something quick, cuz I might get it on camera. That's scary.
Go for it.
All right. Thanks. I think Tom did an incredible job of giving the background and kind of the the big picture of, of the plans. So if, if there are any questions, please just kind of jump in. But in general, I'm gonna give, kind of orient you to the area that's being renovated, as well as getting, delve into the design and then show you different options of, of a lowered scope. So first off, the, we're, we're currently like right in here, just orient you. So the red area is really the, where the, the, all the cafeteria and the seating and the kitchens and the servery will be. There's also some bathrooms to consider, the area of the learning stairs and other, other bathrooms that might be part of this. Oh, and this is just the second floor. This was the upper part of what the learning stairs would connect, as well as, you know, more toilet rooms that would be considered to be under renovation. So here's a blow-up of the area, and it shows the current status. The loading dock is back here, the faculty dining is this area, there's some toilet rooms in the cafeteria. The open cafeteria is this green space, the courtyard is right there. So the kitchens are back here, and the servering areas are back here. And so it's, it's, the area is actually pretty compact, very compact. So this is the proposed design. And at its core, we're relocating the faculty lounge out of the space, and the existing faculty lounge that was in here gets expanded, and the toilet rooms come out, and this is the heart of where the kitchen is. So food comes from the loading dock, and supplies come into the kitchen, get stored and prepared. This kind of yellowish-orange area is the servery. And this is very, very similar in concept to Vernon Hills High School, where students could come in and there'll be places for the pizzas or the sandwiches and salads and, and, and so on. And, and there's even a kind of a, oh, no, no problem, I appreciate it. Coffee bar kind of at the edge, so they could be, again, as Vernon Hills is, who can be accessed at, even when the, the servery is not serving food exactly. So students can mingle and pick up things through here, and then they migrate out. These are the cashiers, kind of an orientation space.
Can you pause for a second there?
Oh, certainly.
So one of the, the things I just wanna highlight is, with the servery, think of it, it's much more like a food court type of feel. The old design, what we currently have, was meant for kids to stand single file in line and move through an assembly line where things were distributed to their trays. The number one thing that our students are looking to buy in our cafeteria on a daily basis are some drink options and some sides, like things like just a small thing of popcorn chicken or a small thing of fries. When you force all the students to wait in a single file line, they, whether they're getting a big meal or just one quick thing, it slows everything down, which is why we can't get more than three hundred and fifty students kind of through our lunch at any one time. By this, adding this type of servery, it allows students to move in. Some students are just gonna walk in, they're gonna look at their drink options, they're gonna grab something, and then head out in ten seconds, where other students are gonna spend a little more time picking hot food items or going through the prepared grab-and-go food items. But this creates a much more efficient means of serving a large number of people in a much quicker amount of time.
Yep, that's absolutely correct. So, and, so the, you know, the different lines, there'll be two or three people in maybe this line, at the coolers to pick up things, et cetera. So they go through the checkout. And when, so once they're out in kind of the cafeteria area in general, there, you can see a variety of different sort of seating options, four seating, ten, eight, and in different kinds of areas. So this area is a little more isolated from the rest, and it has individual seating kind of along here. The, this is the area of your current courtyard. So in this option, we're, we're filling in the courtyard to expand the seating option, faculty caf, faculty dining becomes part of this. So this is our skylit area. So moving down into kind of the, the leg of this, there's some ability, as you currently do, to separate out sections of, of the cafeteria for multiple use at different times of the day. And the hallway along here, they'll, the intention is there'll be a lot of transparency, places where vending can happen and recycling, as well as, if, scroll up just a little bit, the circulation through the building, the hallway, really, it connects over to the, the athletic and band wing on this side and connecting to this hallway. So that's kind of what, kind of the, the, the origin of this diagonal across here. Currently, it's, when you're walking through here, you kind of have to walk through some tables to get to the other side. So we're streamlining this with the intention of, we recognize this is a major thoroughfare of the building, opening it up and making it part of the cafeteria design.
The other problem, Mike, that we have with our current design is there, not only do you have to walk through a series of tables to get to the other hallway, but that is where we have actual serving stations. So our salad bar and our fresh deli sandwiches are in that area, which is essentially a hallway. It's a major thoroughfare, and we often have congestion there where students are lined up to try to buy a sandwich. Other students are sitting at tables, and other students are trying to move from one end of the building to the other. That creates traffic issues as well as concerns around student safety. And so this design allows us to relocate that fresh deli bar, as well as the salad bar into the servery area, thus creating a much more clear space for travel between the two parts of the building.
Yeah, and we think the congestion, particularly in this area, is gonna be greatly reduced because the, kind of, it's a wide hallway, and instead of right now where they have to kind of come out here, go up there and around, kind of a lot of congestion at that point, we're smoothing this out quite a bit. So, so the movement through the building should be improved. Another component of this design is the toilet rooms that were, that are currently right in here are being replaced with additional toilet fixtures in, in this area, kind of our first phase of, of our toilet room renovations. The intention is this whole kind of tan, this, this, this entire area through here would be a series of gutted and renovated toilet rooms. Last component down here is the learning stairs. And so in addition to being able to eat your lunch here, it's, this is the main lobby of the building. So when you're coming in to the building, this is the gymnasium lobby. So here, the, this, we're changing out your current stair, which you have to kind of go in and around. So it would be open up entirely to your main lobby area. So it'll be a natural opening connection through both of the floors, also an area that the students can, kind of a, a natural hanging out center, a natural place that people, that the students can feel like it's really the center of the building. And again, connecting both floors in not just a, a functional way, but in a, a, a way that they feel that there's a real connection between them. Oh, oh, so this is the stair. Once you get, the stairs, of course, go up, so there's a storage area beneath there. So that's where some current technology is, and, and some others which will be either reconfigured or, or maintained as it is. Oh, the next one. Yeah, and so this is just the upper floor with some, some images of how, some very, very simple, simple images of how the lobby will, that currently just has some glass, glass panel walls here, will open up and connect into the floor above. Some conceptual idea of the, how the cafeteria will be. This is where the courtyard is, so it would be a skylit space, which is, since there's not currently a, a roof in that area, it will be, you know, kind of a, an infield skylight.
Where's the faculty dining area that's gonna be a part of that?
Yeah, so. Oh.
Can you see, can you see the mouse?
I can see the mouse, yeah.
Yeah, so, so this is the wall separating kind of the, the courtyard that is part of student dining to the courtyard that is, section that is the faculty dining section. So, so there's a lot of discussion about how that connection might be. Will it be just clear, clear windows above? Will it be, you know, partly, partly obscured or, or just walled in? So a, a lot of options about how that connection is going to be is, is still under discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a different view of the same, same area.
From our, from our design standpoint, we were very concerned that when we filled in the courtyard, we would lose all of our natural light. Right now, the, the courtyard is the, the sole source of natural light in the cafeteria because the sun shines down, and then there's glass windows around two parts of the courtyard. So this design allows, with the skylight, it allows us to capture and use the space year-round while maintaining a full view of the sky and the light entering the building.
What about the, the classrooms that were on the other side of the courtyard?
On the second floor?
Is there, no, on the other side of, there's nothing there?
No.
Only an LST with a few offices. There's no classroom adjacent.
Yeah, so here's a, here's a plan of, so your, your courtyard is right here. So there's an LST here, so there's some offices on this side, and a, a testing center, I believe.
That's correct.
And a hallway on this side. So on the second floor, there's classrooms, science labs above here, and I think there are English classrooms above this area, which won't be affected.
And then on the, where that word courtyard is, are there classrooms on the second floor there or that's currently a single story?
That's single story.
Okay.
So the two-story section is, is kind of all above here and on that side and on the side of that. It's single story all on the side. Well, some of it has a basement, but it's single story from this level. Yeah, and some just different views, some, again, simple, simple renderings of, of the space. You can see the second, you can see the second story, science classrooms above here, again, which the intention is it wouldn't be, wouldn't be affected. So the, it's, it's quite an endeavor to undertake. And so a question was posed, if, you know, what are the core components to the building or to this project? And, and could it be phased or are there different ways to build it? Or can, or, or can the scope be trimmed back? So, so these, these next diagrams show how either the project could be parsed or phased or, or seen in different ways. And it's actually the very logical building of the area because the first component that, that is constant between both of them is the kitchen and serving area. So that's the most expensive component, really the heart of this project. So, so this area right here, we're showing, this, this option shows this built out, almost identical to the, the original design. So there's no compromise in the kitchen or the serving area. But it's, instead of the, the cashier's kind of being at an angle where our, our hallway kind of bent around here, it's just maintaining the wall of, of the original wall. Everything inside here is identical between the two options. And we're showing the, the existing cafeteria, exactly the way it is. It's untouched. So the question we had, were posed to us, if we kept the cafeteria the way it was, how many can we seat using rectangular tables? And this shows 450 students using rectangular tables in that space. And as Tom had mentioned, the, it does change the character from kind of the round community-based things. But, but this is, the question is, do they fit? How do they fit? This is how they fit.
Yeah, I'd like to just highlight, this option is going to be perceived, in my opinion, if we have to do this option, that's understandable. But I want the board to understand, this will be perceived as a loss from the students because they are not getting any increased space here and they are losing their furniture, which allows them to sit together in community. And we are, we would be putting in all rectangular tables. The issue of this, the hallway moving through the cafeteria is not addressed here. We moved the serving line out, the deli bar and the salad bar move out, but more tables get put in. And so essentially, you're taking the same physical space and putting in more tables and more bodies into that space. So I think personally, the student experience in the cafeteria declines significantly in this model. And while we accomplish the goal of replacing our kitchen and redesigning our servery, we can probably get more students served quicker. The feel for the students is going to be much more intense in terms of the amount of bodies that are in the space and the lack of ability to really move efficiently. I want you to think about, if you're the student sitting at this fire table all the way down to the bottom of the drawing, needing to walk through all of the hundreds of students sitting at those tables there, the type of space that that would create and the feelings that that would create for you. So this is possible. This does meet some of our goals. But I just want the board to have all the information that in terms of student perception and student experience, my, my opinion is this is a loss for them and a decrease in their, the quality of their experience.
Question. Oh, I'm sorry, I have a question. Okay, so does this model also include the learning stairs as additional seating or no?
No, the, so we were kind of, so in this first one is just looking at it as, as the, what's the core of, of the idea? And it was kitchen, serving area and, and the cafeteria was left as is. There are a couple of spinoff projects as part of this. And that's the spaces that are essentially being evicted out of, of the area that we're putting the kitchen in. So cafeteria, I mean, the faculty lounge is right here and toilet rooms are right here. So, so the, the easiest one to kind of conceive is the toilet rooms. We're taking space that is the, the.
Meditation, reflection.
Meditation room and, and kind of the drying area that is in the girls locker room area, that's not an area that's used. So we're, we would be putting, renovating this for additional toilet rooms in the area. Approximately the same number of fixtures getting relocated over there. That's correct. So this was, this is just one, one part of that area would be renovated. Again, with the minimal kind of approach. Fixtures here get replaced with fixtures here. The future, future phases, other phases are additional toilet room renovations around all and, on either side. But at least in this option, it's almost fixture for fixture being replaced. The faculty lounge, we're showing it relocated here. You don't know if this is the, the best place for it. Essentially, if we put it here, the testing center has to go somewhere else. There might be another place for the faculty lounge to go. But at least in square footage, we're, the intention is we're, we would be relocating it in the area somewhere.
The problem with that is that you look at that, the staff cafeteria is now completely disconnected from the student cafeteria. So number one, for staff, they'd have to purchase in that yellow spot and then walk through the student cafeteria down the hallway around to the staff cafeteria. So they would actually leave the cafeteria to move around the hallway into their staff caf. And the second piece is they're disconnected from where the students are. And third is, I don't have just empty rooms where I can just say, oh, well, we're going to put the test center over here. That's an important resource for us and just moving that would create additional problems throughout the building. So can it be done? Yes, but it comes with costs, which I perceive as negative to the overall design of the building.
Tom, I just wanted to say that I agree with you. This, while it solves some of the problems with the servery in the kitchen, I look at that as a complete step backwards in terms of the student experience on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, click. There we go. So this is nearly identical. The difference here is that the, the existing cafeteria, student, certain, student dining area would be renovated, but it wouldn't be expanded. And so, so in this one, we're looking at, if you're going to keep the walls where they are and the seating the same size it is, it is. We renovate the floor, the ceiling, the lighting, you know, the walls. But, so it would be a nicer version of what you have. But, but, but no bigger. So the, the next, the next upgrade is filling in the courtyard. So at this point, so the, the serving area kind of bumps out a little bit and, and the space is as we showed it before. This has a different, a slightly different option in that we're putting the, showing the faculty dining at down here. And the, the only reason really we were doing this was we're, since this was again, kind of a, a, a reduced scope in a way, our earlier options had, we were cutting skylights into the existing structure. So this one, if the, we thought, okay, well, if, if we're not cutting, if, if that's the expensive part, let's just maximize as much skylight as we can in the hole that's already there. But, but there is a little mixing and matching. So again, the only difference between what you saw before is the faculty dining got flip-flopped and this is all a skylight. But they're largely the same. Oh, yeah, that's correct. And so this one shows renovating that, the rest of that area in here. And I believe the next one, the next option has the learning stairs. Oh. Oh, yeah. So, so this next option just is, is everything you saw before or, or the, yeah, basically everything you saw before, adding in the learning stairs and additional toilet room renovations. So we're trying to show it as kind of building up? Or if you look at the other side, paring down?
I think the faculty thing is moved up to the left instead of.
Yeah, so in this one, we're, if, if you were going with this option, we would look at the faculty where it was.
And just to clarify again, the, the natural light that we'd be gaining with the skylight would also be enjoyed by the faculty, correct?
Hmm.
Okay.
The learning stairs can be included in any one of these options, right? Because I see it as a line item alternative.
Yeah.
That can be added, no matter what option.
I'm sorry, the, the first one.
The learning stairs can be included in any option we choose.
That's correct.
Right? Okay.
And it could be its own, it could be its own project.
There just, there's just some limitation on the skylight, you know, for the faculty dining in this design, as in the original design. If you did a whole roof, then you're going to have noise transfer between the two, you know, to seal up to a glass roof. So we would work that through. I think there's, the next slide kind of, kind of shows a, a rendering of, shows kind of the faculty dining and then piecing skylights in across, but working some type of skylight and, you know.
It was a different skylight option.
Different skylight options.
And before we move, before we move on, I just want to clarify, this option four is basically the original conceptual design with more toilets. So back to the question I think was in our last, last time. What if we added more to the scope to get after more toilets? That's what this option is really showing.
It's larger than the original. Yeah, and it's a different skylight option. In here, this one still shows the faculty lounge as underneath in that, in the original courtyard area. I think there was. Oh, that was it?
That was it.
Yeah, missed it.
So I do want to walk through, I, I have the attachment for the numbers in your.
Package?
In, yes, in the board book. Essentially, how this breaks down is if you think of this as kind of four options. This option one, which is the core elements, which is the kitchen and the servery, that is estimated to be about $8 million. We're just playing with round numbers here. Gilbane was able to put it, put together some rough numbers for what this option would look like. $8 million roughly for this, for this. Then to go to the next step, which would be option two, which is doing the, the finishes in the seating area, the, the seating area would bring that up to $10 million. And that was kind of a, a question I had noted from last meeting. If this whole thing is looking like 13, wow, that's a lot more than we thought originally, yes. What would $10 million look like? That is what $10 million would look like.
I'm sorry, is this the difference in the furniture?
Uh, the, the option two is doing the finishes, meaning new flooring, new ceiling, new lighting in the cafeteria. So those of you that are familiar, that remember the Fieldhouse project that we did, if you remember how the Fieldhouse felt when you walked in, it kind of old, dark and dark. But now when you walk in, it feels bright. You'd have the same feeling that you would walk in. Right now, if you walk in the cafeteria, it's kind of darker. You would walk in and it would feel much brighter. It won't be any bigger to Mike's point, but it will feel, it will feel newer. So that, that is, that is the $10 million project. And, and then to go to option three, which would then be to kind of get, kind of close to, so if you broke this up into three different phases, right? So the phase one is core, phase two, adding the finishes. This would be phase three, option three, getting closer to that original conceptual design area. And then you're back to essentially the same 13 million that we had. And then, and then option four, which is adding more toilets, gets us to about 13.6 billion to add additional toilets in that other part of the, part of the building, if you recall, kind of where that was. So those are really the four different options and the numbers associated with them. Mike, I do have a question, if you could answer, that we hadn't gotten yet. There was a question last time about sustainability. And really, the idea behind it is what would it take? Talk about sustainability in this project, but then also the question, what would it take for us to achieve some type of objective sustainability standard, LEED or otherwise?
So, there we go. So in, there's, from the beginning of this project, there's been a desire to make it a, a green, kind of a green approach to the project. And which we have, at, at our office, we have a commitment to, to, to green design. So, but there's, there's many different ways to achieve that. So, and many different components of what green design, you know, green building means. At its core, or a basic component of that, is energy efficiency. So that's making the envelope of the building as energy efficient as you can, but also the components, the HVAC systems, the, in this case, there's a lot of cooking equipment and heating equipment and ventilation equipment and different things like that. There's also ideas of water conservation, which is, again, this building will, this project will use a great deal of water. The kind of building, again, kind of building onto that would be indoor air quality. So the environment itself is a sustainable environment and with, and it's equipped with, with things that encourage recycling and, you know, other components like that. Fourth level would be the, the materials that are used in there. So a sustainable, it's locally sourced as we can, helps the, kind of the, the, the green aspects to, to the building. So low VOC, adhesives, furniture even, that, that is, is, is little off-gassing and, and uses as many natural materials as possible, help in that green design. So there's an, and, digging down deeper into, into those, we can get into a, a lot more specifics. There's, there are programs that quantify, that can quantify and measure the sustainability and the green design aspects of the building. LEED is, is one of those standards. We, we've done a, a number of LEED schools, high schools, additions, renovations. And that is one way to, to quantify and measure how green a building is. You can use all those standards and not be LEED certified. So, so you can, you can take the measure of, of, of the actual certification or you can use those standards and apply it to the building. And that's becomes, considering the, the way the energy codes and the building codes have, that's become, LEED has, and green design has become more and more just very commonplace in, in lots of projects. So, but again, LEED.
Lost audio.
Do that. Um, sorry? Do that, I'm sorry?
He said he lost...
I can't hear anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, so LEED concepts are present everywhere now in, in the codes.
Can somebody else talk and see if this is systemic?
So Eli's listening to the stream directly and says it's fine. Yeah, it, it might be on your end. He, he can't hear.
Dan's gonna message him. While they're just talking about that, the other thing, our students, when they presented to us, they asked us to consider reusables. So reusable silverware, reusable plates. There is their analysis, they did a very thoughtful analysis of costs recovery. And by their analysis, the cost is ultimately recuperated by a school and it's cheaper to use reusables, even with the addition of an extra person on the shift to help with cleaning the dishes and things like that. Because you're no longer purchasing all the recyclables or the disposables. So the, Mike, I forget Mike's last name, a colleague of Mike Henderson's, who just specializes in kitchen design, architecture, is doing one kind of redesign to show what it would mean if we were to incorporate more of a disposal bay where you would return silverwares and plates and things like that. The thought is that that could potentially be incorporated into this design without significant changes to the overall concept.
One other thing I just want to clarify because Kara, you seem like it was an important question for you. As I look back over the drawings, the teachers, the staff cafeteria, currently none of the designs show the skylights being over that area. And so I just want to make sure that if that is something that's important. I know one of the design has it adjacent, so that almost like transom windows, the sky would come in from there. But I think cost and design-wise, when Mark was talking about some of the sound carrying and some of the other things, there are some barriers to trying to have it be as light-filled as possible, but also using some of the best skylight technology. So I didn't want you all to leave tonight thinking that the designs included one thing. So if there are strong feelings that you have, we can hear those tonight.
I have a question regarding how that courtyard space might be used. And has there been any discussion about kind of turning the courtyard space into, it's gonna sound crazy when I say it, but almost like a diagonal hybrid space? So that, hear me out, this one might, might be strange. To take the learning stairs and put them in the cafeteria, they are learning stairs to nowhere, as we know, because there's no second story happening on the back end of that skylight. Does that create a space beneath it for potentially a faculty cafeteria, dining space, that could also perhaps borrow the natural light from the skylight that's going to be there? And then you also have the extended space on the end of the cafeteria nearest the main office, or the, that main hallway, that can also be student dining? Does that, I mean, does, does taking that courtyard space and thinking about it a little differently, organizing that space a little differently, afford us any, anything in terms of seats, seating, and accommodating the number of students that we have? Faculty getting maybe a slightly nicer dining space that's cheerful and helps with, you know, morale? And then does it also give us an opportunity to incorporate into that design those learning stairs? This is, again, just spitballing here, if this has not, I keep looking at this and that's like my immediate go-to, is how can we make that courtyard space more dynamic and multi-use?
So that's actually an idea that was explored in some of our, our initial designs. The, we had the learning stair, the stairway inside the cafeteria. And again, these were, these were quite, quite early on. The, as it was explored, we were wondering if, you know, where it would have the biggest impact on the building. So, so the connection and kind of the, the commons that would be created would, in this case, would be only in the cafeteria. So we thought if it was that same space, if it was this commons was literally the center of the school in kind of moving the lobby up. So, so, no, it's, it's an excellent idea. And again, it's, it's one of the ones we started with. And it, it moved around. The other factor is that in order to make it work, we lost one of the labs upstairs.
Oh, oh, I didn't realize that that would happen.
Yeah, that was the...
That might be a non-negotiable then.
Right. That was a tough, yeah, that was tough for us to think about an alternative if we were to lose a science lab.
Okay. Thank you for listening to that.
But tracking, tracking the same.
Are you at all concerned about safety in the learning stairs? I mean, I've never seen it personally. So I'm trying, just from the pictures, I think it looks great. But are you concerned at all about safety with students in that area?
I'm not. I've seen many high schools and elementary and middle schools incorporate it. We would probably have some type of supervision in that space at various times, especially during lunch periods, just like we would with our library or any other student resource area. But in terms of safety, no, there's not, nothing other than the typical safety that comes with a student resource area or a student cafeteria, in my opinion.
Did you have something specific in mind in terms of safety different from a stair?
I always forget. No. The pictures are amazing. I think it would be a beautiful design. It just seemed like it was a big, wide, open space with a lot of kids congregating and, you know, lends itself to tripping and falling and there's no real stopgap. But I also understand if it's being used in a lot of schools, clearly it's designed well. That's why I just wanted to see if you've seen it in other buildings, if there have been issues.
Stevenson has, has one in their athletic wing, quite, quite a large one. If you want to see how it's...
Also has learning stairs in their new addition. The one photograph you showed, or that you showed was from Nutrayer.
Nutrayer, York has it as well. They, you, you typically have a, a traditional stairwell along the side and then more of like risers with seats, kind of like an amphitheater type feel on the, the inside.
If you've been to Vernon Hills Pool, it's kind of like the seating, you know, in the spectator area in Vernon Hills Pool, with like a two-foot, two-foot rise and you have stairs in between. And it'd still be utilized as a staircase from the first floor to the second floor, replacing one that's, the original one that's there presently.
Yeah, just the other piece on, on that is, wow, there is a cost investment in that. Because we're using the existing stairwell, the cost is a relatively very small part of the overall project. But I think the impact is substantial. The, this is, you know, we're a blue ribbon school. We're one of the, the finest schools in the state with a tremendous community history and pride. We don't have a central location for our school and community to gather. You kind of walk in our front entrance and you're in a hallway and you're in the gym. So we're trying to find a way to really establish sort of a center space in the school for community and for student gathering and for some of the kind of life of a wildcat types of events that we celebrate. We think this is one way to do that in, not only serve our practical needs of expanding student seating, expanding student resource areas, keeping access to the first and second floor, but also adding some aesthetic value and some overall, I think this is the term, it's a, it's a, it's, forgive me, it's jargon. It's really only found in architectural manuals, but a wow factor to the front entrance of the space that, you know, when you walk into Vernon Hills, you walk into a grand foyer with multiple levels and staircases and a sense that, you know, there's not only options to use that space for different events, but also just a real sense of prestige. And Libertyville lacks that a little bit. This would provide us an opportunity to, to bring that into place.
And as you note, Vernon Hills High School, when you walk in, you do see students who are using that space to socialize, to collaborate. It does have an additive feature. It, it does have the wow factor, but it also adds to the student and the visitor experience.
Yes, absolutely.
And as you noted, in every case, the cost of $475,300 is a small portion of the overall cost. And could also be completed as a summer project? Could the stair option, the learning stair option also be completed as a summer project?
It can if, as long as we're started early enough. So yes, it can be.
When you say early enough, can you be more specific?
Oh, so a, a lot of things, well, the actual construction of the stairs, summertime is enough. It's just that all the ducks have to be in a row in order for it to happen.
The lead time to make the decision.
So mechanical, all the products have to be in place. Everything has to be ready to go and, you know, and all of, all of the unknowns. There's many of the unknowns of the cables and things running through that have to be identified. So, so construction, yes. It just would have to be probably bid out, you know, in November kind of timeframe designed.
Next month, yeah.
And...
So just thinking out loud, if we were sure this was a project that we wanted to start, it's feasible to begin that part of it, even if we have not figured out how to finance the cafeteria part of it? Is that correct?
It could.
I'm not saying that's the right thing to do. I'm just saying feasibly, it's, it's feasible.
Well, it wouldn't be this summer. So the, the bid specs can't, can't be done in, in the window in order to get a bid in, in, in enough time. So, so it could be its own independent project. It's just we've, we've kind of lost the ability to bid it for this summer.
I appreciate that. So there's no reason to rush to try to approve one smaller portion of it? That, that doesn't make any sense. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a, it's glorified bubble diagrams right now. It's not, the, the detail isn't in the drawings yet.
Of course, and I didn't mean to imply any sort of assumption that we should be ready to go with it. I just was thinking out loud, again, if, if it was something that we were sure we wanted to do before we were sure about the cafeteria project, could it be? It could be green-lighted, but not for this upcoming summer. Okay, thank you.
Actually, do you mind, I've been having a little bit of a technical difficulties with Don, but I have him on my cellphone, on speakerphone. So I just wanted to give space for him. Don, if you have a question or something that you want, you should be able to go ahead.
Right now, I was digitally delayed before. Am I coming through the system right now?
Yes.
So you don't actually have to hold your phone up to the microphone, Dan? Because I think I'm...
Yes. No, he is holding his phone up to the microphone.
So that the people in the room can hear you.
Yeah, I, I wondered if I was still, okay, gotcha. I have taught on learning stairs. I love them. I have seen many buildings with students congregated on learning stairs. They become a hub, a focus. They are social, they are practical. Anytime students are, or teachers are going to take a group of students out of the building, it's a great place to have them meet to congregate prior to going out. So they can definitely be instructional. So that popped into mind, Kara, when you were asking a question about safety. I don't think there's any issues with safety. They're, they're terrific. I love them.
Although I appreciate the consideration of safety because that's obviously a very important aspect of everything we do.
Remember, my clients are much smaller. And they push a lot.
I just had one kind of rough order of magnitude question. So about, you said 475, so let's call it half a million for the learning stairs, right? Versus remodeling or fixing a bathroom? And what's the rough order of magnitude for comparison sake there?
Depends on the size of the bathroom.
Yeah, yeah. I think we were, I believe the, the toilet rooms we did this summer, were they 300,000-ish? So, so like 150,000 each? And, and those were kind of three, three fixture toilet rooms? So obviously, the larger you get, the, the, the more, more they are. So it's, it's just an expensive space, a lot of utilities, a lot of durable finishes, ceramics and, you know, and ventilation.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just kind of thinking of, you know, we have certain projects that we have to do. So that, that's why it came to my mind. Thank you.
On that note, then can I ask if we were, well, I guess where do those restrooms specifically fall on our capital projects priorities list, like currently? So if we didn't do them in this cafeteria renovation? Oh, I love, I love hearing myself. When, when would those restrooms get done as it stands right now in our capital project priority list?
We don't really have a scope and prioritize list of those restrooms yet. So there is nothing, there is no priority.
So the bathrooms that we have, the however many units that are currently on that capital projects list do not include these across from the cafeteria?
Yes, they are inclusive of that list.
But that list is not, that list of bathrooms is not prioritized.
But eventually we'll get to it in terms of, it, it's a matter of when, I suppose.
Yes.
Okay.
What other questions do we have for our partner and administrators?
I have one thing that I just, I had not quite heard yet, and I just want to be clear, is the, if you look at this as the option two, which is adding the finishes, I want to be realistic, the, the chances of us going from two to then three would, are less likely. Because in order to do that, you would have to undo a lot of the work you did in two. And so I think it, just like foreshadowing, I think it's very likely that if you head down the path of one and two, I think you likely end up at two and I think you're probably realistically done without undoing a lot of work. So that, that just wasn't something I couldn't quite heard. That did come up when we were kind of talking through some of these designs. So that's what I wanted to share.
So what I'm hearing you say, Dan, is if we choose one or two, doing three or four down the road becomes much, much less likely?
And much more expensive to do the courtyard later after we've already redone finishes and things like that.
Because you'd be tearing out new things, newer, newer things.
I, I guess I, I think of it as two or three. You know, so it's...
Not two, then three.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can, can someone, again, I apologize, can someone remind me the difference between option two and three under dining, between that 2.3 million and the 5.2 million? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the cost options chart with the red and the blue.
Just give me one second.
Yeah, so, so both option one and two don't expand dining in any way. So option two, it upgraded the finishes, so...
Right, so that's like the facelift of the dining area.
Correct.
Yep.
And so the big change between your existing space and option three is the courtyard. So it includes all the other upgrades, a different configuration, but all the upgrades of two. But it creates additional space in the courtyard.
So...
That's really where the big cost is.
I may be reading this wrong, but so between option two and option three, it says courtyard reno and those numbers are the same. So the difference is in that dining column? So you're saying the dining includes... So you're saying the dining includes? If someone could look at it.
So when, when Gilbane put together the original conceptual estimate, there was a lot of different components. This was a component, I can't remember exactly what the 169, I think the 169 was to fill in with the rest of it or something. It was a small component that we still need to capture the dollars, but that is not the cost of filling in the cafeteria.
It sounded too good to be true.
Yeah, so that was, that was actually, that was when we still had an option of a little bit of outside space remaining. So when they said courtyard, it was the cost of, of kind of a, a small exterior area.
Got it.
It wasn't including, it wasn't renovating.
A patio essentially, yeah, got it. Okay, so again, pretend that's kind of not there right now, right? I can do that. Thank you.
I can see how that's confusing.
Thank you. Thanks for validating that.
I think it is clear that the difference between two and three are some of the things that Tom was highlighting before about do we want 450 students in this current footprint of seating? Or do we want those 450 students spread across to a much larger area where we have the round tables, the different kinds of seating, the space that will allow students to not only eat efficiently, but socialize and have a place to gather?
Mm-hmm. And what about option two plus learning stairs as a possible compromise?
So that is an option. It just doesn't enhance the student experience in any way.
In the cafeteria.
It just jams more students in the same space and gives no flexibility in terms of seating two, seating one. It's just all giant rectangular tables.
I understand that. But does the overflow space onto the learning stairs for eating purposes at least alleviate that jam-packed maybe feeling?
Yeah, I'd have to, I think potentially, I mean, you'd have space for, for students to move out of the cafeteria to the learning stairs. What I would have to think through is what, there would need to be some degree of regulation because if, if what I'm worried about is that the cafeteria space would be so unpleasant, many students would want to go to the learning stairs. And how we would regulate that would be a challenge. Plus, it's not for every student because the, you're essentially sitting on stairs while you're eating. So for kids who are eating hot meals and things like that, it might be of a challenge that would certainly provide for the extra bodies, but maybe not suffice in terms of overall quality of the eating experience.
Thank you.
We have sort of three, three kind of buckets, right? We've got the core cafeteria, including the dining space. Then you've got the learning area, and then you've got the bathrooms. So those are sort of the combinations that we need to inform, it sounds like. Either we do all three kind of areas or we do one or two of them. Am I getting that sort of correct?
I would, I would say there's like four. The fourth bucket, I would say, is the student dining. That is one that is a, is a big variable. Meaning is the student dining not getting taught, because so.
No, I'm including the student dining and the kitchen eatery into one.
What, what kind of scope are you, in, in, into your one? In your mind, which option of the student dining was in your, in your mind?
Three.
Okay.
Okay.
So in that case, then, then yeah, I would say that would be, that would be the three.
Although that likely, I agree with, with that, that there would be three. The only thing is there would need to be some addressing of toilets by capturing, by the loss. We're losing toilets if we do option three in the cafeteria.
Option three is showing, doing all the toilets in the hallway and adding the extra toilets that we're losing is shown in option number three.
Option three is essentially the conceptual design.
Right, option four is additional toilets on the second floor.
Yes.
Okay.
First and second.
So where's the $400,000 difference between option three and the conceptual design?
Option three didn't include the learning stairs.
Oh, it did. When I'm looking at our, our pricing option, all of the options, as far as all the way to the right, includes the learning stairs.
It's an option for all of them. It's the same price regardless of which option we choose.
Right.
So you're saying at the very top, what was presented on August 31st was 13,444? And what we're showing for?
Yeah.
Option three is 13,000,0061?
Yeah.
And then adding on the first, the additional bathrooms brought it up to 13,600, but why is 13.44 different?
So one, looking at the numbers, remember, if you recall last month when we talked, when I first tried to introduce this design, we had some provision for skylights that were long and narrow, eating into the existing roof. That is what the, on the far right, you see 240,000 and then 159,000 was to, taking skylights eating into the existing roof. And then the other, then the alt-three was essentially doubling that. Another way to say that is really the conceptual design has changed, and they no longer would put the skylights there as we had in that conceptual design a month ago, and would instead put the skylights in where the courtyard was, which realizing the expensive part is putting skylights into a roof that already exists. It's cheaper to put skylights into a roof that doesn't yet exist. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Does that answer your question? Because I'm not sure I understood.
I, I understand now. Yeah, because the total with the restrooms is still 12,500. 12,500. And that was the difference is the alt-two and alt-three. So we're looking at a 600,000, 550,000 difference by adding between three and four, which would be adding additional bathrooms.
Yes.
And not to get too specific, but how many fixtures would we be adding between three and four in additional bathrooms?
We don't know. Because what, we haven't done a study of that yet. We know that those areas need to be renovated. Actually, in likelihood, your, your current, if we, we looked at a current toilet room and we made it handicapped accessible in today's standards, we'd actually lose fixtures in an existing bathroom. So, so in this option, we were renovating the shower rooms and the drying areas in the, in the girls locker room. Because it's, it's, the girls locker room shower area is, is a very old standard. It kind of, the big, big shower room. So we were incorporating all of that space. So, so we're not sure, we're not sure how many additional, how many we will lose in your existing one and how many we'll gain incorporating additional areas. So, you know, our hope is not, I mean, is at least to maintain the same number. Our fear is we may lose a fixture or two.
I guess I think she's also referring to the first and second floor bathrooms, not just the ones that would be replaced adjacent.
You're asking about the additional washrooms in the center of the building.
Additional five or 600,000.
Yeah, so that would, it's basically, it's, uh, uh, on the first floor, it's boys and girls, or men and women's. Second floor, men and women's, five fixtures in each. So it's a total of 20 fixtures. And they're pretty close to ADA compliant. These are larger bathrooms. So we would be remodeling and putting fresh, you know, 20, 20, replacing with 20 fixtures, 20 for 20.
Those are pretty generously sized. So we wouldn't, I don't anticipate losing any fixtures in the ones that are being considered.
So we'd be getting 20 fixtures for 20 fixtures at 600,000, where we got six, we spent 300,000 on three fixtures over this past summer, right? Because we did two bathrooms for 300,000. Each toilet, each toilet cost us 300, each toilet center cost us 300,000, and we got three fixtures, right?
Yeah, and those were original washrooms in a smaller space.
We're getting a bigger bang for our buck.
We, we lost fixtures, we lost fixtures in those washrooms. Because to make them ADA compliant, right here, the space is large enough where we're, yeah, we're not going to lose fixtures.
And that gets us closer to our complete capital projects. Where we're looking at all of them. I mean, am I, is that where you're going?
Yes.
I like a deal. It sounds like a deal to me.
As well as the washrooms that would be taking place in the hallway that are existing outside the cafeteria, those be done. Those are in the long-term capital as part of washrooms.
Right.
So you'd actually be taking care of six washrooms and actually seven because we're replacing seven.
Out of a total 33 that we originally had in our projects, right? Don't we have 33 to, 33 bathrooms to replace?
I don't have that list in front of me, but it's 20, 30. It's, it's a decent number.
So out of the 30, we would be taking care of seven of these? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. And option four, you'd be taking care of seven.
I just want to double check that before we like actually confirm that. Mark, can you speak to, so I got the list here. We had to remodel the two washrooms, 400,000 was this summer. How many fixtures, how many toilets was that?
It was.
Between the two washrooms?
Six toilets for the two washrooms.
Six toilets for the two washrooms at 400,000?
Yes. But you can't factor that in because of the size of the space. Every, every washroom is going to be totally different because of the footprint. The footprint that we have, the, the washrooms that we're going to be, is a large footprint. We had a very small footprint, so your cost of fixture goes up because you're in a smaller space.
Is there anything to the idea that those were independent projects? And by incorporating this into the cafeteria renovation, we're taking advantage of doing some remodeling and it being a lower cost to incorporate it into a bigger project?
Generally, yes. So it's, when projects get very small, there's a premium just getting them to show up. So, so if it's, you do get more competitive pricing because it's part of a bigger project. It's, yeah, so yes, it's more efficient with a larger project.
What is our timeframe now? What is our timeline on this?
So based on the timeline that we established back at the beginning of September, September, the committee meeting, we were bringing to you the conceptual design and a brief introduction of that design and the estimate at that time. And then September board meeting, we were reviewing the overall list and kind of how we got here and the projects and the criteria that we used. Because some of the questions that brought, that were brought up in the September committee meeting were, well, now what about all these other projects that we want to do? What do we do? And then we'd foreshadowed that tonight would be a more detailed description of the design, bringing Mike in to explain that. And since our September committee meeting, we added more question to add, more questions to answer, such as what are other options that we have? What would $10 million look like? Could we add more toilets to that? And what would that look like? What would sustainability look like? Which I don't want to skip over that if there were any more questions about that. And so based on that timeline that we set at the beginning of September, what the timeline to stick to would be to ask the board, y'all, to approve us, to authorize us to bid this at our October board meeting. So we have, we, we had approval from the board to go to schematic design. We're not probably technically quite at schematic design, but we're past conceptual design. I think the last month kind of gave everybody a little bit of a pause in terms of trying to get a reimagining of what this project could look like. And so the next step for us is to really get authorization from the board to bid. And so that would be to move forward with more design and develop bid specs and bid this project out. And then depending on whatever numbers come back with the bid, you would approve that or not. There are just some costs associated with that. Like there are design costs, whether we approve bids or not, that are just, that's just how it works. And that's what, that's what we would look to. So I still think, my gut tells me the October timeline is still something that I would want us to hit. But the question that I need to be able to answer is really what project are you looking for us to bid?
And I guess my question is, at what point do we figure out how to afford this?
Yeah, that was my question, do how do we?
So I, I don't want to move forward with the bid process until we know how we're going to pay for this.
That is a good question to ask, and I appreciate you asking that. I love it when boards ask that question. The answer to this project is you have the cash to pay for this project right now.
But yes to this is no to everything else. And our capital projects list, do I understand that right?
Most other things.
To several other things on that list, yes. There is, there would, you're not spending all of your money on this, or we sure hope not. You would have additional funding available. You wouldn't likely be able to resolve the, the top three as we wanted to, but you very likely, I mean, this project on its own is already making an impact in the restroom or in the, in the bathrooms that we want to do at LHS. So you're making progress in that. I think also the Vernon Hills is something I actually didn't notice until recently. The, the score for the Vernon Hills LST and the bathrooms actually was the same score. It just got sorted alphabetically on the list. So there really is no reason why the Vernon Hills LST is number two and the bathrooms are number three. It just kind of happened in alphabet. So there's no reason why you couldn't look at that project as well. And that's, that's a pretty small project from just a scope lens to do that. But you are correct. I don't believe you would have the, the cash available to do the top three on that list, let alone all the other ones on that list, which we have known about. And I, I believe we've been consistent in saying that for probably a year now. When we talked, I can't remember if it was the October board meeting or the, the September board meeting or the September committee meeting, is at the November committee meeting, I will be able to share with you information about how you can pay for the rest of these projects potentially. But that's just not something we have quite ready yet. But that's a discussion that we're looking to have at November.
I also.
I pulled, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to comment that we, the updated cash reserves would be 15.5, I believe, right around there.
15.7 maybe, somewhere around there.
And so looking at, it wouldn't be all of the bathrooms, but it would be the full design of the cafeteria plus additional bathrooms plus the LST.
Yeah, I would just.
So like 2.75 of our top three would be completed with our current reserves.
I just want to make sure, as we're talking about these different options, we have 20 units listed in LHS in our capital projects. Is that pretty accurate? 20 units of bathrooms. When we say units, we mean toilet centers, right?
Make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. You're talking about the capital project prioritized list?
Yes.
That we had? And you're asking if that, that number is 20?
Well, I'm looking at it. It says 20 on our list. Is that 20?
Hold please while I clean that up.
There's numbers, I have to go back and verify because there's numbers put together showing locker room washrooms as well as hallway washrooms.
I think when we were developing this, our sense was there was about 20 bathrooms that needed, that were in significant need of, of addressing.
Would be how many, how much of an impact are we making on that list by choosing option four?
That would be this, that would be the answer. I, I would need to restate that we do not have that scope developed. And so I couldn't, I couldn't tell you. I would not want to tell you this will fix seven of the 20. We're not prepared to tell you that. We, we would have to develop that project further before I could give you better information.
I think that's an important consideration in choosing the concept versus the additional 600,000.
We had to come up with an estimate somehow for those 20 fixtures. So I guess that's what I'm hearing. You want a little more refined, not a project detail.
Not a detail. Just like, are we making a significant impact on what we were intending to do?
We could bring back, not a detailed plan, but we could bring back. We could bring back, not a detailed plan, but we could bring back additional information to help you see the impact that would have on the overall bathroom needs that we've identified. Along with the recommendation at the October meeting.
Dan, from a timeline standpoint, it seems like we have run out of runway to start any work next summer at this point in time, given where we are, right? It's, it's just. No?
No.
No. But we, that's why the October would be important because we would be starting the kitchen and the servery areas first. Remember in the presentation back in, in early September, it was two summers worth of construction. So some of the construction would be starting this summer and into the fall.
Okay.
But it wouldn't, we, we would be losing out on some, like just doing the learning stairs separately. Because that design and other things would need more time from STR to get those to the level of information that they could be completed and bid out that quickly.
Yep. I'm, my mind is just going to what happens after this is all done and then we have a capital need. So without that sort of how do we pay for this and still have cushion for other things that pop out? That's kind of where my hesitation is. I think everything that was discussed here makes sense, completely makes sense. But the how do we pay for it and still have?
Cushion.
Cushion, I guess, beyond the reserve that we've kept aside. But how do we have more spending money for a longer term?
And I'm, I'm going to amplify that because I think it's our job to look for, look to the future, not just for, do we have enough money for this project, but what stead does it put us in for the future? Because in a year or two years from now, we're going to have things that are equally as important and impactful as this cafeteria project. And to not give any thought to how we are going to provide for the financial resources to do that, I think is irresponsible.
Yeah, not to preview too much into November, but if what you're asking for is how can you do this project but still have money left over to do other projects? The only way you do that is you either need to get more revenue in, more money in. And one way you could do that is if you have money left over at the end of the year, money that we didn't spend, that came in under budget relative to revenues. That's, that's what changed, that's what changed our last estimate for how much money was available for capital projects from, I don't remember the number before, but it was around fifteen million-ish. Now it was fifteen million point seven, based on the math that we're using with the twenty-five percent reserve threshold. You either get more funding, we'll talk about ways to do that, or the only other thing you can do is reduce expenditures.
Can you talk a little bit about option three, which is incurring debt? That's number one.
You get more about.
Increasing revenue.
Yeah. And November is, we'll, we'll talk more about the different options you have to get more revenue. Likely they involve debt. But the, the core of how you, how you are able to, how can you do this? How can you do a project? It's not even this project. How can you do any project? Let's say we were talking about, this was not about the cafeteria. Let's say this was about all the science labs we wanted to do. And that was twelve million. And let's say, let's say my estimate was wrong there too. And let's say it turned into twenty million. We, we can't, how do, same question applies. How, how can we do these but still have enough money to do everything else? The answer is you, you don't. And that's why we have a prioritized list to know for us, what, what are the, what's the next thing for us that's the most important? That once we have the funding available to us, we will be able to do. So either you get more revenue quickly from some source, or you're able to reduce expenditures to give you more money left over. Or you wait and see money that got left over that you thought might, you might spend, but it just came under budget or whatever. And that builds up over a period of time. That's essentially how this district was able to afford some of the major projects they've done over the last five, 10 years.
But they had explosive growth, so their revenues were increasing. And we know from Caserta and from other projections that it would be foolish for us to project any sort of explosive growth organically in our revenue.
There is, there, you're correct. There is no data that shows us to anticipate a significant increase in our revenue absent any special circumstance. All else being equal, there's nothing that tells me we're going to have a massive increase in, in our revenue in the foreseeable future.
And I'm not trying to denigrate the fiscal responsibility that happened over the last many years that allowed us to continue to do major projects without either reducing our expenditures or incurring debt. That, that was a wonderful way to operate. But this board has really no expectation that we could save up enough to do the type of capital projects that we were able to do in the recent past without, by, by just save.
Correct. It would, it would take a very long time.
Yeah.
And expenses are also much higher now. There's more inflation. So I mean, I, you know, everything we've seen on the trend for expenses is, is much higher compared to the revenue we get in, so.
That's correct. Yep. That, that's, that's correct. You only have so much money. And I, I, I try to even boil this down to like, on a personal level. I only have so much money in my bank account that'll let me do, without running into any other problems, that'll let me do some projects around my house. I need to figure out, we need to figure out what's the most important project for us to do. And we can do that project. We just know that, that means I can't do these other projects right now, or until I get more money somehow. And I don't want to ignore the fact that this is after we have done the twenty-five percent cushion. So we believe the twenty-five percent cushion is the safe cushion to allow us to operate without any, any cash flow concerns or any concerns like that. There are, to say it another way, there are many millions of dollars more that is within our cushion that I would not recommend you touch. Can you? Yes. You're the board. You can do that. Would I recommend you do that? I would not. Cause that can compromise, if, if you're not too careful with it, that could compromise the long-term safety of all the other hundred million of dollars that we spend every year that we have to be able to maintain the services that we provide. So I, I would want to say, and I meant it when I said you have fifteen point seven million. You really have fifteen point seven million to spend on extra projects that I don't believe will affect our financial condition. All that will affect is your ability, you can't do, you can't do fifty million dollars worth of projects. You can only do fifteen point seven.
Kind of maybe again preemptive, preempting a bit of your November discussion, but from a approach standpoint, are you recommending we spend what we have right now and not go for revenue growth? And you only do that when needed? Or you're, or would you say it's okay to ask for a revenue growth in whichever way possible now? And pay for some or all, some portion of what we're trying to do with that additional revenue? Is that kind of, have you thought about, or is that what you'll be talking to us about?
That's a fair question. Back to like what would I recommend? I try to be careful about what I recommend versus giving you information and access to make an informed decision. So what I will share with you, my intention to share with you in November is if you want to do XYZ, then this is your option to be able to do XYZ. But I, I can't tell you that XYZ is the important thing for you to do.
Right.
I, I don't feel that I'm able to do that for you.
I'm going to come back.
We could just as easily be in a situation where you said, we've got fifteen point seven million and like, that's it. We're not entertaining anything more. And that's the constraint we would have to work at. So it, it, it depends on, it depends on what your, what your priorities are and what the outcomes you're looking for. And I can, I can, I believe tailor recommendations to meet those, to meet what you're interested in doing as close as, as close as you can. And sometimes you can't, and I'll be honest about when I think you can't. But also at the end of the day, I'm one person.
Right. I'm going to maybe ask another way because it's, my day started at four AM today, so I'm kind of. But let's say we have thirty million dollars worth of capital projects we would like to do in the next ten years. And in the next two to three years, we're looking at spending half of that, right? Fifteen million. So if you, if you take like a longer term view, would we fund the fifteen million now or let's, let's say now with, with debt? Completely? Or would we say, we have all the money right now, let's just spend it? So are we like trying to increase our cushion of available dollars now? Or we spend what we have and if we need fifteen million more after five years, we'll deal with it at that point by either not doing the project or we look at revenue increasing at that point in time. It's either we will need more money or we don't do the project at all. Right? So when is the right time to get that additional funding now or when we'll need it later?
There's a lot there and I want to acknowledge it. Give me one second here. What you said was true. You either get more funding to do the projects or you don't do them. But the other option that I, I just need to be transparent with you, another option is you look at reducing expenditures to allow you to have the extra money. So that, that's just, those are real, those are real, that's how the math works. In terms of what would you do first? Spend the money that you have or try to get additional funding and then maybe use that money in place? Getting additional money, no matter how fast you're looking to get it, is going to take a while. It's going to take a couple of years. So doing this project two years from now, mathematically would say it would cost you maybe five percent more per year. We don't really know how much it would cost two years from now, but the assumption is it's going to cost more. How much more? We don't really know. So you're better served to do it. You're better served to do it sooner. You, you will get a better bang for your money if you do it now than later. That's, that's the common theory. Unless prices could go down, that's happened before.
Got it.
Did I address everything you said? I'm not.
Yes.
Entirely sure.
I, I, I think the main thing is the cost might go up. So if, if getting additional revenue is going to force us to wait for another year or two years, then I don't see mathematically what's the value in waiting unless we say we don't do the project at all, right?
A wise mentor of mine also talked about thinking about the income we receive from tax dollars, trying to use it to support the students who we're currently serving. So it's tempting to want to try and as we're collecting tax dollars to think about something for eight or 10 or 12 years out. But we're serving thirty-four hundred students right now. And we've identified these needs. And again, not saying they're urgent, but those needs aren't going to change. And the idea of spending our current tax dollars to meet the needs of the students who are before us right now, I think is a really important perspective to take. Not to put us at financial jeopardy, but because Dan has just said, you have this chunk of money that we've designated for projects. We've prioritized of the, a dozen projects that we think, all of which would be good for students, which one would have the most impact on students across many different variables. So I think that's another reason why, in addition to cost rising, I think the other idea of trying to use our current funding stream to support the best we can our current students.
It's a good point. Thank you.
Can I be heard?
Yes, please.
Oh, good. All right. It sounds like we're back. I it seems like we're going around trying to, to figure out whether or not we should go ahead and spend the money. I'm, I'm ready to pull that trigger. I think that the design and the number of students that will be impacted, the schedule, all of that makes it worth our while to go ahead and make this decision in October. If we don't make this decision in October, then we're kicking the can down, you know, at least a year because we'll miss bid opportunities. So I'm just saying, I'm, I'm ready to move forward and, and go ahead and throw my support behind. I'll just say it now, option four. And let's move forward.
I'm also in favor of discussing deploying the available revenue for this project in October.
I mean, if we're in agreement, we can just, we can move forward.
Yeah. And I, I think we're looking around right now to make sure that there's consensus among all the board members with what you and, with what you said and what I amplified.
There is for me.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just wanted to work out the options on the financials, but I think you sold me on one that we have. A twenty-five percent cushion. Already baked in for safeguarding operations of the school. And if we try to seek other revenue sources at this point, we'll, we'll get really behind and therefore more expensive. So, and this is something we have to do. I don't see an option to not do it. So.
And, and I, now is the time for us to have thoughtful discussion in a public forum. I mean, this, this is really our chance to really be thoughtful about how we deploy our valuable resources because they are scarce. But I do agree with Don that this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
I mean, I think make the best use of our resources and I just don't see us, the other options, and I want to thank you for bringing us those because those were our concerns. See, was it something that we could have, we could make work? I just don't see us getting the same kind of value with option one and two.
But it, but it is the responsible thing to do when you're considering a big project, just to use Dan's analogy, when you're doing a major renovation of your home, to look at all of the available options and, and make sure we have explored everything, that we've looked at how we cost engineer everything before we make such a, a large commitment. And not only talk about the, the, the design, which we really appreciate you taking us through each element of it and all the different options, but the long-term consequences of the use of our resources. So I think this is a very long and thoughtful and important discussion for us to have. So thank you to everyone.
And if I could, I, I just want to echo what Dr. Herman said and just be very, very crystal clear. This district is incredibly financially strong. Nearly every district in the state would want to be as strong as we are. You are, you are extremely fortunate to be as strong as you are. Doing these projects will not affect that in any way, in any way.
And we appreciate you being explicit about that because I think what you're hearing from us is we take that responsibility to protect what, what this district has built in all of our tenure and in the tenure of the people that came before us. And, and we appreciate you acknowledging that because we, we take it very seriously.
And I also need to commend you, like, I love that. That, that is your role is to do this. If it's not you, who else? You were elected for this very reason, to watch out for the resources that we have and to do the best for our students. So just wanted to commend you, like, you're doing, you're doing exactly what you need to be doing.
Thank you. Dare I suggest we move on to our next agenda item? Thank you very much for your time tonight, Mike. Really appreciate your partnership. Okay, moving on. The Vernon Hills High School Ten Year Health Life Safety Survey Plan.
Okay.
Tom, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right. I will do my best to move these along. Back in time, in February, the board approved the ten-year life safety. in time, in February, the board approved the ten-year life safety. This, it then went through the county level, to the regional office of education level, it then went to the state level for approval. We, it has been approved at the state level. Now it has been back in our bucket, in our court, excuse me. The ball has been in our court to then, now, now seek a plan to address these. We went together, we got together and put together a plan to address the priority items. So there's priority A, B, and C. Urgent, B and C. Priority A items need to be done within one year. Priority B items need to be done within five years, five, and then priority C items need to be done never, but they recommend you doing them. So we are, we are only addressing priority A items because they are priority A. And so we have a plan together to address them. We actually have two that are already completed off the list. But wanted to give you that there. I wasn't intending to go through the entire list, other than to be transparent and say, this is the list, this is the plan we have. Our plan is to update you every other month in terms of the status of where we are, because we want to make sure this gets done in a timely manner. When we've ever talked about life safety issues, like, this is the list. These are the important things that we need to fix within a year, and we want to take that seriously and just show that we, we've got a plan to address them.
So this is, just to reiterate what you said, this is what you've already shown us, but it has now been approved by the ROE and is back to us.
Correct. And we said, you know, there was a little bit of a concern back in February about, like, some of these numbers are kind of big. Yes, but there's a lot of ways, there's a lot of ways to address an issue. And so we've kind of developed plans to get a sense of how we would address the issue. So the other, so this won't cost nearly what even the estimate is probably in there. There is one thing that we're gonna need to bid, it's multiple things actually, that we're gonna bid in terms of plumbing. That's to address the mixing valves, and we're gonna do a couple of other things listed there to bid. So what you would anticipate from this is a bid that's coming to do this work. I don't think it'll be a massive cost. And we have already made a provision in fiscal, in this fiscal year's budget to address this. So this is not additional funding. That takes away from anything else we've talked about. This is in, this is in our existing budget to address.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions about the items that we're seeing again on this list?
No.
Okay, then moving on to the much anticipated 2023 estimated tax levy.
This one's just gonna have to take as long as it takes.
Understood.
All right. Thank you. I tried really hard. The, all these presentations are making me having to up my game. You guys have really high-quality presentations lately.
Just to add on to the pressure, Eli, can you see how many people are currently streaming? Four. We've got four people streaming.
There we go. This is for all you at home.
And thank you to each and every one of the four of you for tuning in and sticking with us for this important meeting.
Okay, so here is levy estimate. Really, what I intend to do is walk through six different things. We're gonna talk through our funding sources. And we're gonna talk through our property tax cycle. So this is the off-year where I would explain what the cycle is. It's important for you to understand how that cycle works because it produces a lot of money for our budget. We're gonna talk about CPI, we're gonna talk about PTAL, we're gonna talk about our EAV, EAV data, and we're gonna talk about our levy data. So first, funding sources. We get our funding sources, not from terribly many different things, but the, the most prevalent way we get our funding sources is through the local community right around us. That manifests itself primarily in property taxes. Property taxes represent eighty-eight percent of our revenue. Eighty-eight percent of our revenue comes from the local property taxes. Another significant portion of local revenue has been CPPRT. That's tax money that we get. We technically get it from the state, but it's from businesses in our local community, and it's considered local funding. We get school fees, so students, registration fees and participation fees, things like that. And interest income has been another bucket that's been a bit bigger the last several years. We also get money from the state. The state primarily funds schools through evidence-based funding, and that's the model where they look at the students that are in your school and the needs of those students and the costs to be able to meet the needs of those students. So they put together a formula to figure out how much to fund schools. Transportation is another way the state funds us. It's a reimbursement system, so basically whatever we spent last year, they reimburse a portion of our costs. They do not give us all the money, not nearly. They give us a portion of the costs. I think for regular transportation, we're around ten percent, if I'm being generous, and for special education, I think it's closer to seventy percent for that. And then the last bigger bucket from the state, because a lot of things were rolled up into evidence-based funding, but the last bigger bucket from the state is special ed private facilities. So we get a reimbursement from the state for students that are placed in private facilities. Do we get a reimbursement from the state that have, for students that are placed in public facilities? We do not. This is what it is. The third major source of funding is from the federal government. So this manifests itself in the every, or Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which really is the title grant, so Title I, Title II, Title IV grants. And then the other one is the idea Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is really special ed funding. That's where the bulk of our special ed funding comes from, is through the IDEA grant. And that's our sources of funding. That's really where, just a review of where does our money come from? Now, how does it compare with what happens around the United States? In the United States, what you will find is on average, the federal kicks in a little bit, that's pretty consistent across each state. But then the difference between the state and local share is about split, what you find on average in the United States. In Illinois, it's a little different. There is more reliance on local revenues. And that is due to the funding system that was established in this state. And it is, the local is a smaller portion than it used to be. It used to be two-thirds local. But kind of the way they're counting state money has changed a little bit. So this is, I'm, I'm not sure how true this is, but, but we'll, we'll go with it. It is, it still is more like more highly based on local revenues. And then District 128. The vast majority of our revenue comes from our local community right around us. Okay, so that's a brief look at our funding sources. The next one is looking at our property tax cycle. This is the part that we normally wouldn't do every year. We do this every other year, because this is a lot to explain every single year. So we're looking at the property tax cycle. It is, it in, it's considered two processes that are happening. The first process is the assessment process, and the second process is the levy process. We're gonna talk about each of those. So the assessment process is, through that process, the goal is to determine what is the tax base. What are the values that are in your taxing district? That's what we're trying to figure out. But then in the levy side, we're then trying to then, how do we convert that value? How do we convert that tax base into revenue? That's what the levy process does. So again, assessment, figure out what the value is, levy, convert that value into revenue. So let's talk about the assessment process in more detail. What we're trying to get after, the way we figure out what the value is, is by getting this thing called EAV, which stands for equalized assessed value. By the end, if you're not familiar, you will know what this means. Now, this is, we're trying to figure out the equalized assessed value of taxable properties in our district. Now, why taxable? Because not everything in our district boundaries is taxable. There are tax-exempt properties. We have government buildings. We don't pay taxes on Libertyville High School. Thank God. But we, we don't. And same with village property, they don't pay taxes, so we, we don't get revenue from that. Places of worship generally don't pay taxes. Some hospitals don't, TIF districts, we don't get money, additional money from the TIF districts that are there. And so that's why taxable is the important part there. And so the general rule with the assessment is that properties are supposed to be assessed at a third of the fair market value. So if your house is worth about two hundred, six hundred thousand dollars fair market value, what a willing buyer and a willing seller would, would exchange for your home, then the assessed value would be two hundred thousand dollars, which is a third of that. The reason they do that is to kind of smooth out the changes, so there's not vast, big changes year over year. So in the assessment process, to figure out the EAV, which the assessed value is a third of the fair market value, there are four steps. Assess, appeal, equalize, and apply. I'll go through each one. In the assessment, the assessment part is where the township assessor, so Lake County is split up into townships. The township assessor assesses the values as of January 1st of all the, all the properties. They do that as of January 1st, and that takes a period of time. And that's what the assessment, they figure out what is the value of all the properties. And then what happens, thankfully, is an appeal process, because township assessors are people and systems can create inequitable numbers. And so there is a border review level that happens at the county level that will hear, hear appeals. So if you get your assessment, you can appeal. You can say, this is not the right assessment. It's too big, or it's too small. Well, mostly don't people appeal if it's too low. But you could. After, after the appeals are heard, then it gets sent for equalization. So that is where the Illinois Department of Revenue tries to balance the entire state by county. So what happens is there's a lot of properties on our borders that are in multiple counties, and so they try to blend it so that you do get a, a fair third of the fair market value. For example, in Cook County, I believe they only assess residential properties at ten percent, not a third. So instead of thirty-three percent, they only do it at ten percent. So the, the Illinois Department of Revenue steps in and applies multipliers at the county level to do an equalization factor. Fun story, the factor in Lake County is almost often one, the number one, equalized. In Cook County, it's two and a half, three. It's, it's a big number, but in Lake County, it's, it's one. Then that equalization factor is applied. The county clerk then has to then apply that factor. In our case, it's one a lot of the times, but it could be different. It has been different before, and it probably will be different in the future. They apply that to our values. And so, once you go through assess, appeal, equalize, apply, we know the equalized assessed value of all of our taxable properties in the district. That's the assessment process. The levy process then converts that via EAV into revenue. And to do that, it really does that in five steps. Plan, adopt, extend, collect, and distribute. I'll walk through each one. Plan the levy. The first step of, the first step of the levy process is to plan. So the, I, as your administration, analyze and estimate the levy, plan for it. The next step in the levy, this, pay attention to this part, this is where you have to take action. The board has to, by law, adopt the levy. No one else can do it. This is only something the board can do. Then after, after it goes through all the processes, then the county clerk approves an extension. And, and the county clerk calculates the approved taxes that you're allowed to get according to state law. You can ask for whatever you want. The county, the county clerk will calculate what you're allowed to get under law. Then, once that is done, then it will go into collect, which is where the county treasurer will bill and collect the taxes from everybody. So, is the second installment been due already in Lake County? I don't know. September, okay. So thank you. They've billed and they've collected those taxes, and after they collect the taxes, the county treasurer then turns around pretty quickly and distributes that money back to the taxing districts. So, in that process of the levy, plan, adopt, extend, collect, distribute, that's how the value is converted into revenue. So one thing to note is the levy has to be filed with the county clerk by the last Tuesday in December. So in order to be filed, it has to be adopted. And before it can be adopted, there's other steps that have to happen. We're in the middle of that right now. One thing I want to clarify that sometimes gets confused, the levy is the amount of revenue that we are requesting. We're asking, we're not asking for a tax rate, we're asking for a dollar amount. The extension is the amount of money you are approved to get. And it's not even the amount we're gonna get. Why?
Not everyone pays.
Because not everyone pays their taxes. Almost everyone does, but not everyone. So the extension is what we're approved to get, under law. The other thing is when we say levy, we say levy to make it simpler, but technically it's several levies that happen. The most common ones that you'll see often are educational operations and maintenance, IMR, social security, transportation. There are several others, some of which we do employ. But there are several levies. The other thing that's important in the tax cycle is truth and taxation, which is a very, most significant right now. Because truth and taxation says, at least twenty days before adopting the levy, which is right now, the board must estimate the levy. That's what we're gonna do right now. If the estimate is more than a hundred and five percent of last year's levy extension, a public hearing is required. If it's less than, if it's not, or equal to or less than a hundred and five percent, you could still have a hearing, but it's optional. Hundred and five percent makes the hearing required by law. So that's the assessment, or that's the property tax cycle. Two processes, assessment and levy. And to map this out, I couldn't make this much prettier, but this is how the process overlaps over two years. So the blue is the assessment process, and each of those steps along the way. And the green is the levy process. So we are budging for it, we're planning for it, we're estimating. And then you can see, you know, they assess the values of, of the property. It's a two-year process to figure out a levy for one year. So it takes a while. And then it goes through the board of review, and then actually can go to another level of review called PTAL, but that can take years, and I mean years, to resolve. And so that's something that has like its own special rules that we don't need to pay attention to right now. So that is the property tax cycle. That's the part that we don't necessarily go through and explain every single year. But that, that's what the cycle is happening, and that's, this is the spot that we're at in the middle of. So actually, if I go back, this, the spot we're actually in the middle of right now, if you look in October, we are planning for the levy, that's right now, but if you move further up, border review is happening right now. So the border of review in Lake County is literally having hearings about people appealing their assessments, and they're going through that process right now. So that's where we're at with that. All right, CPI. CPI is another important thing. That stands for Consumer Price Index, a lot of acronyms I know. That is published by the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics, and here's what CPI is. It is the measure of the average change over time in prices paid by urban consumers for a market basket of consumer goods and services. Yikes. I need, this is important to understand, so I'm gonna break it down. We're gonna start with the market basket of consumer goods and services. So what this means is, it is, it's a collection of a bunch of different things. Food, beverages, housing, apparel, education, medical care, recreation, the cost of this stuff. It's figuring out. So it's figuring out, what is the cost of all these things? And then the second component that is, what are the prices paid by urban consumers? So how this works is the Bureau of Labor Statistics literally sends people, they hire people and send people out either to businesses in person, online, through a computer, through their apps. They might call them and figure out what is the value of all these different components. It is a fascinating thing for them to figure out how that, they literally send people out and figure out all these prices that people pay. So we have this basket of goods and services. What are the prices people pay, and how does that change over time? So we have this valid, this basket of value of goods and services that costs a certain amount of money. Then from, how does that value change from one December to the next December? And that is, that is really what this does. So CPI, again, it's the measure of the average change in overtime, prices paid for a basket of goods and services. So here is a picture of the last twenty years of the actual CPI. CPI, it's an index. Think of like the S and P 500 index. It's an index, and so then it's just a number. And how that has changed over the last twenty years. You can see over the last five years, there has definitely been a significant increase, or not the last five, the last three years. There's been a pretty big increase there. But that is how the index has changed. But here's how it works. So for example, and this is for our levy year, here's how it looks. It looks at December 21. What was the index at? It was at two seventy-eight point eight. Then in December 22, what was it at? It was at two ninety-six. The percentage difference between those two numbers is six and a half percent. That is the CPI figure, and that's where it comes from. That's how the math works. So when we're, so when we say CPI, really we're saying it's the average change in CPI from December to December. And here's how that average change has been over the last twenty years. It's been very high for the last two years. That is not normal. This is an abnormal time. CPI last year was at seven percent, and this year it's at six and a half percent for our levy this year. That is not normal. Before, before this, it hadn't hit five percent in thirty years. So essentially, CPI is the rate of inflation, more or less. To give you scope, even though it is high, six and a half percent is high, the average, the tenure average is actually two point six percent for CPI. Now, this, this chart actually has nothing to do with our levy, but it's, it's meant to be a little bit of an indicator of what might be happening. So I said CPI is a percentage change from December to December, right? But every month, they publish a CPI, and you can look, what was that CPI a year ago? So for August, they've already published August CPI. We know what last August was, so we can do a percentage- We know what last August was, so we can do a percentage change from August to August. That's what this chart shows. This chart shows 20 years of month to month annual changes from each month. And so what you could see is that high peak there, that was the height of our pandemic and really difficult times. But if you can see over the last few months, it's definitely dropped. And so, it is, so the August CPI was like 3 point something, 3.6, something like that. So, it's, and that's an annual change. So it's possible that we have seen the worst of CPI. We don't know. No one knows. But, this is encouraging to see it at least being on the, on the done. It is ticking up, but we'll see what happens when September data is released. So that's CPI. So PTAL, PTAL is an important component. This is also called the, called the tax cap, if you've ever heard that, that phrase. PTAL stands for Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. You remember that our extension is the amount of tax revenue that we are approved to get. Property tax extension amount we're approved, it is limited. This limits our, how much money we are approved to get. And the way this limit is, the way this limits it is by the increase. You can increase by CPI or 5%, whichever is less. Until two years ago, did anybody care about that phrase, whichever is less? No one cared, because it never mattered. It matters now. So let's show you some math. This is how it actually works. You take the prior extension, multiply it by 1 plus CPI or 5%, whichever is less. So that means, even though CPI is at 6.5%, so that even, even though the rate of inflation was 6.5%, we can only do 5%. Last year this time, even though CPI was 7, we could only do 5. So at least we're closer, it's less now, you know, we're closer than it was. So you take that math, divide it by your current year EAV, your equalized assessed value, minus new property. New property is a new thing, term we haven't heard yet, we're gonna talk about it. What this means is that your extension for this year is based on what you were extended last year. Your extension every year matters so much, and your extension is largely based on your levy. So your levy each year is, is critical to your ability to function. New property is then added on top because it didn't exist before. New property are improvements that people make to their, most common is their houses, people adding on additions to their houses, or new, new houses that are built. And the effect of PTAL is, is really because it keeps pace with inflation, it helps you maintain your buying power up to 5%. Anything beyond 5%, it won't help you. But for the majority of the time that we've had this law in place, it has helped us keep our buying power. So with that, it's an algebraic formula we saw. So there are four variables, two of which we will know, and two of which we will not know. In that math, CPI we know. That was determined back in January of 2023. We knew what CPI was. We also knew what our prior extension is, because that was determined in spring. What we will not know yet is what our EAV or our new property is. We won't know those until next spring, so we have to guess. We try to make an educated guess, but it's still a guess. We get data from the county, and we try to estimate based on that. But that's PTAL. All right? Now, let's, so, done with concept, now let's look at real data. So I'm gonna show now the real EAV data that we have. So this is the last many years of data. And what this is showing is what our changes for next year, 2023, so the 2022 and before is real data. All actual real data. 2023 is an estimate. What we're showing is that EAVs are expected to increase this year by 5%. So the next chart is showing the percentage change in existing EAV. And really just showing that this year, existing properties happen to be, happen to be changing by 5%. Which is very convenient, that existing values will change by 5% because CPI is the 5% that we're capped at. So that's gonna create, create some very easy to understand math, which is not normal. New property is down this year, but the only reason it's down is because we had the TIF that was reabsorbed last year. Don't worry, I'm not gonna talk anymore about that. That is now done. But, new property is still something that exists. And it actually was higher than normal. So if we take out the TIF data from last year and look at our just new property, we're, it estimated around $22 million. And how that is made up of is residential. Residential is pretty still strong, but commercial was a bit higher this year. And I'll talk about what, what goes into that in a second. I don't wanna talk about it right now. So, the biggest component of that is the Everleigh Apartments in Vernon Hills. We had part of them come online last levy, the rest of it comes online this levy for 8 million EAV. That's equalized assessed value. That's a third of the fair market value. However, I need to put an asterisk there because that is currently under border review right now. They're appealing their assessment, and so that number will probably change. It will probably go down. But I don't know what the number will be, so we're guessing. Another few bigger, bigger commercial properties that are coming online is Happy Hyundai of Libertyville, right next to the hospital. Their, their name is actually Happy Hyundai. It's that, that's awesome. Makes me wanna buy a car. The, the next biggest one is Wood Springs Suites in Libertyville. This is on Peterson, a little bit further west. It's like a extended stay hotel that came online. And then, you won't notice it here, but next time you go to Vernon Hills, when you leave, look across the street, because this building is literally across the street from Vernon Hills High School. It is right now empty, but it is a warehouse, warehouse distribution building for lease that is currently available for anyone that would be interested. And so that came online as well. So those are the biggest ones that happened. So that's our EAV data. What's our new property happening, like 22 million, and then what's our existing EAV? By 5% up. Now, for the real meat, the levy. So here's what the estimate is of the levy is. This is showing an increase based on cap. Now, capped is based on what's capped based on PTAL law. There is a portion of our levy that is uncapped, but it's very, very small. It's CEDOL IMRF, and it's, at this point it's CEDOL MRF. Back in the days when the district had debt payments, that was what the red was. Because that's, that's not capped, that's based on whatever the debt schedule was at the time. Back to the story of debt service extension, this is something I'm just gonna keep here. Every year, there, there is no expected debt service extension because the district has been debt-free for several years. And you can see how that extension changed over time. This chart is one that shows the relative difference between CPI and the change in our capped extension. Meaning, normally we would be capped at 5%. And you can see, over the years, the red line is usually a little bit bigger than the blue line. That's because of new property. We get CPI, but then we also get new property that's added on top. 2022 was an outlier because we had the, normally we would not have been able to access anywhere close to the 7% CPI. We had the TIF expiring, and that just happened to feed in. Now, that wasn't a bunch of extra money we got. Well, it was, but we lost the TIF surplus. So it really was a wash for us in the, in the end. But this year, it will be that the CPI is 6.5, and we're only gonna be at about 5.6. I'll show you that in the next slide. I do wanna show you that there is an interesting number in 2014, and that is real. So, at the time, the board for the 2014 levy decided to reduce their levy then. Based on the conditions that were facing the district at that point. And what I'm gonna show here is that in 2014, that decision saved taxpayers approximately $2.3 million. But then you're able to recoup some of that. But ever since then, there has been a continued, another way to say it is our, our extension is about, at this point, almost a one and a half million dollars less than it would have been otherwise, had that decision, that one-year decision in 2014, having a ripple effect. Because if you remember the math of the extension, what you can be extended this year is based on what you were extended last year. And it's, it can have a forever impact. I wish it wasn't that way. I wish you could have more flexibility, but that's the system that we are given. Okay, so now, let's talk real numbers. We know the CPI is 6.5, it's capped at 5%. We know the prior year's extension is 90 million. But we don't know existing EAV, but I'm, I'm pegging it at 4.93 based on data I have from the county. And new property, excuse me, at 22.7 million. So when we run it through that algebraic formula, we get an estimated extension of $95.5 million. Which is a 5% in, well, hold on. Which would mean a 5% average increase for existing homeowners. But it's always relative to the change in EAV. So normal, here's how I usually have to explain this. If your EAV goes up by the average, then your taxes will go up by the average. But this year, I get to say something simple. If your EAV, if your assessed value goes up 5%, your taxes will go up 5%. It will match. Many years, I have to explain, the average EAV is only going up, or it's expected to be flat. So if your assessed value is flat, your taxes might go up 3%. And that's sometimes hard for people to reconcile, but that's just the way the math works. This year, it will be aligned. Your existing value, if it goes up 5%, your taxes will go up 5%. If your value goes up by more than 5%, your taxes will mathematically go up by more than 5%. So that's how, that's how that works. But the total increase I'm anticipating is 5.56%. And that's because 0.56 comes from that $22.7 million of new property. So, what to levy? I recommend we levy 95.9 million, which is a cushion, adds a cushion above what I'm expecting us to receive, about $387,000. And that puts us at a total increase of 5.99%. And if you remember back to the truth in taxation slide, if you're estimating more than a 5% increase, the, the hearing is required. And I would be recommending you levy more than the 5%, which would make the public hearing required. Just the same as we did last year. The reason last year was twofold. One, CPI was high, we had to do it, and the levy, and the TIF was expiring. We absolutely had to do it. This year, it's really because the CPI is at 5%. And we're fighting a CP, we're, and we're, or it's capped at 5%, we're fighting a CPI of 6.5%. So the cushion, why, why do a cushion? We do that because what if the estimates are wrong? The two variables in that equation are guesses. What if they're wrong? So we have guessed 4.93% for existing EAV and 22.7 million for new property. Now, the way the algebra works is you have to run a scenario that says, what if, what if existing properties are lower than I thought? And what if new property is a lot higher than I thought? If it's the other way, the math doesn't really, doesn't really matter. So I run, if I run a scenario that instead of values increasing by 5%, they only increase 2%. What happens then? And, instead of new, excuse me, instead of new property being 22.7 million, it's actually 36 million. So there'd have to be some other big thing out there that we don't know, which is Dr. Herman has said to me before, has happened. If that happened, then we would technically lose $4,000 based on this levy. I think that is a very unlikely scenario. But I think it's enough to cover, oh, it was 4.5%. It was 20, 20 million, it was 25 million. It can cover a little bit of variance there. And so as a reminder, when we did our projections, our financial projections back in February, this was assumed in there. So we had the 20, for 2023, we had the 5% in there. We also had new property in there. We had 13 million, it's a little bit higher, 22, it might settle at 20, would be my guess. But we accounted for this in there. And then this then shows, this, this was our then projected future at that time. It's a little bit different now, you know, once we get our data back from fiscal year 23, we'll update all of this. But this is based on that. So this, these levy dollars are crucial for us to be able to operate for the foreseeable future. So, what are the next steps? We have to by law publish a notice in the paper of the hearing. That'll go in the paper November 1st, 2nd or 3rd. We will have the hearing on November 13th, and we will adopt the levy on November 13th. And then the very next day, I will file that at the county. It's not due to the last Tuesday in December. The reason why I do not wait until December to approve the levy is because if I can't get four of you together in December, I can't have a quorum and we can't adopt the levy. And that has happened to me before. A previous district, it was November, ready to adopt our levy. Crazy circumstance, we could only get three board members. We couldn't hold the meeting. We could not approve the levy. Thankfully, we had the extra month for December to get everybody back together. That's why I do it in November. I'm not willing to risk or compromise our financial stability. And missing this absolutely would do that. So, this is, the hearing notice is very, very specifically driven by law. There's a lot of particulars in there. This is really what the notice would look like. Based on that, we can't add more words, we can't take away more words. It's as readable as it's, as it's legally allowed to be. We can't add commentary or anything like that. That's how the hearing hat, the notice has to be in the paper. And watch, over the next couple of months, you're gonna notice a whole bunch of these in the paper, all over the place. You'll notice because of that thick black border around there. So, that's the levy. So we've, we walked through funding sources. Hopefully you understand better the property tax cycle. We looked at CPI, PTAL, our EAV data, and our levy. That is the estimate levy presentation for 2023.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. I'm always impressed by how you turn, turn something that's very complicated into something any layperson, including me, can understand. What questions do we have for Dan?
Can you remind what we, I think it's in the presentation, but can you remind what we levied last year?
We levied last year more than 90 million. I couldn't remember, I don't, couldn't tell you exactly what we levied, but we got about 90, about 90 million.
Okay. It's, I think if you click on certificate of tax levy, I think it's, I think you have, the extension is there. It says prior extension, basically 90.3.
Yeah, that's the, that's the, but again, extension versus levy are different. The extension was the 90. But our levy last year would have probably been a little bit, I think we had probably a $300,000 cushion around then too. So, call it 90.6-ish million, probably was what we levied.
Thank you. What other questions do we have? Seeing none, thank you. We will move on to summer 2024 capital projects.
I know there's a lot on this agenda. I'm so sorry for the time, but this is also important. So we have Mark here. We have put together our list for 2024, summer 2024 capital projects. The ideal timeline for us to do this normally would be September, October. We're on the, kind of the tail end of that. But also, we normally wouldn't do this until after the 1st of the year anyway. So it was kind of a lot of work to move us up to get these, get the wheels spinning sooner than we have otherwise. So we are on the path to an ideal timeline. We're, we're almost there. So, what I would like to do, I think what I would like to do, be, given the time, is hit on a few of the big ones. And then open up if you have questions on the other ones, just for the sake of time. The big one, and one of the big ones is the chiller at Vernon Hills. Part of the plan for this year was do the chiller at this building, but the chiller at Vernon Hills also needs to be done. So that's coming up for this summer. That's at 1.2 million. Another thing that you're gonna see that is a common theme is us having proper maintenance at Vernon Hills. Vernon Hills is at the age now where things need to get replaced. And we need to keep that on the system, because we do not want an LHS cafeteria thing to happen at Vernon Hills. Meaning, we're trying to play catch-up a lot in this building, but we also can't let Vernon Hills fall behind. So we're, we're doing a little bit of both here. And so you're gonna see roofs is another big rock for Vernon Hills on the next cycle. So we, we did roofs some last year. You're gonna see roofs for the next several years at Vernon Hills, as we systematically try to replace some major roof components at a time. So he's got roofs 10 there, 11, and then 2 and 2A. And so, depending on kind of where the numbers come back, do a combination of those. The next big rock is starting to, so a big rock at Vernon Hills is the roofs. Another big rock that is gonna take several years to address is all the HVAC equipment in this building. There's a lot, there's a lot of little univents. That's not a univan, is it?
No.
Good. Okay. Well, there's things that look kind of like that, but are univents all over this building that need to get replaced. There's rooftop units and stuff like that. There's an attachment with pictures, so you can see the things we're talking about, see samples of what we're talking about. They haven't exactly identified the specific equipment yet, but putting a placeholder for that. The net effect of all of this is, to do all of them that's on that list is a, call it 5.4 million. That is much more than we spend right now. This last summer was about 4 million. What I told Mark is I think 4.5 million is probably the number that I think we could probably hit, given our, given our projections and everything. So, what that means, and, and I should say, the other thing is, we put priorities on these between number ones, which Mark is saying are must-dos, number two, which are should-dos, it'd be really good to do. But number three are things that can wait. And our district leadership team has reviewed this. And they agree, our recommendation is to pursue the ones and the twos right now. For about, for, call it 4.6 million-ish. That's our recommendation, and the threes, we're recommending we're, we're just gonna need to wait. That's the best second thing of December is this for you at 9:30 at night.
And there's not a lot of threes on the list.
There are never a lot of threes on the list, but you're correct. I think the sense was the stadium lot and walkway. It does need to get replaced, but it can wait a year. And the visitor bleachers is something that can wait as well.
Because we do have areas that are accessible.
We have areas that are accessible, just the question is in the visiting section of the bleachers, we don't. But the stadium is accessible.
Yes.
The stadium is compliant at both schools.
Yes. So.
So almost everything on the list is a one or a two, meaning it's going to get done.
Yes, and as prices come in, these are, these are estimates and these are rough estimates because we've never been quite this early before. As things come in, if things start to get out of hand, you know, we'll update you as we, we've done previous years of like, here's the estimate and here's what the actual cost is. If things, some of the things are trending in, in the wrong direction, we may have to revisit some of the priority twos and further prioritize those.
I guess I just keep coming back to our conversation of trying to reduce expenses and some of this equipment, if it's operable and still working, is it necessary? That's the only place I can see that there's any kind of wiggle room. But I leave that to you.
Yeah, I, I would say when we were talking through the equipment, all of the equipment is extremely old and a lot of it is very rusty. There's one piece of equipment that is new there, but it's a really small unit. And it really, it's something that is, they, they needed to get after the new smaller spaces that they can't really get to right now. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add.
Are you referring to like the Kubota?
No, basically, yeah, I mean, some of the pictures, like the Kubota. If you look, if you blow it up, there's no bottom to that door. It's a piece of metal taped on and, you know, they just have to be washing it.
I did look at the pictures.
All four that we have, we've replaced the floors. Had to weld brand new floors and from salt and spreading salt in the winter, just rusting through them and everyday use. So there's, you know, we've looked at everything and it's the worst of the equipment that we need to replace. And same with the HVAC. We're starting what are the units that we're having the most problems with consistently? And then, you know.
Going from there.
I have a couple of questions with regard to roofing and carpet replacement. The carpet replacement, I believe I've asked you about before, but I want to revisit it in case something's changed. Actually, I'll start there. Is there a reason why we replace with carpet instead of laminate flooring outside of noise reduction? And, and if by replacing with something that's more long lasting than carpet, are we kind of saving money for the future, I suppose, by not having to replace it as often?
I don't think we've ever explored the option. Vernon Hills has always been carpeting.
Yeah.
And we've added LVT in some areas. But their choice was for carpet in their hallways. I, I mean, I can ask if they wanted to go to something else.
I just wonder if it would reserve moving forward, just as we replace, how often does LVT have to be replaced with the lifespan on that versus what's the lifespan on carpet?
Right.
And then additionally, I have asked you about this before, or it's been asked just more generally. Every time we redo a roof, we are, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, outfitting it or fitting it or, or what, whatever the wording may be for potential placement of solar panels, correct?
We are upgrading our insulation and, and upgrading the roofing. I'll look and see in the area where we're at. I mean, when we did the main roof, we, over the, the new gym addition, that was structurally built up.
That's right.
To prep without a design, depending if you have to put and connect down to the, the framing without a design and a layout when you do the roof, it's kind of hard to pre-do that.
I appreciate that. I, I think I was remembering, misremembering, and it was in fact, in reference to the gym or the multi, whatever that newer space was at Vernon Hills.
We built the structure for it and we just need to, since we had a, a ballasted roof, we've lost the rock weight, but we've added weight of the insulation. We're not sure what, we have to have the engineer tell us what the calculations are for solar on those roofs. So we're not sure, you know, we might be able to do the full roofing with solar or you might only be able to do a partial section of the roof, you know, depending where it is in the building and what the, the I-beams are holding it.
Yeah, no, that's totally fine. I think, I think it's, if, if solar is moving up the priority list over time at some point, maybe something we need to talk about.
It should just be standard operating procedure.
Yeah, these two roofs here, and I'll talk to our, our engineer about it. These two roofs here are basically the library roof and the, the, I'm not sure what they call it, the in the second floor, north end of the building, the last part of the round next to the library.
The arc.
The arc, yeah. So it's those two roofs. And then one just on the south side of the tower. That's 2A and 2B. So those are good locations for solar.
Yeah.
Where the other roofs that we've done so far, except for 16, weren't good candidates because of the, of the roofs higher next to them, so.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
I'll ensure we, I'll ensure we include that.
Thank you so much.
For our engineer, sure.
So to summarize, we want more information on possible cost savings to go with alternate flooring other than carpet for the long term? And then to see if there's a cost benefit or a preference or what the pros and cons would be.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions on the capital projects list in front of us? Okay. Moving on to item E, fiscal year 24 state maintenance project grant. Something we have to approve every year.
Normally you wouldn't. It's only when the funds are available. They just so happen to have been available for the last three years, which is not typical because I have the years of history there. But this is something that does require the board to approve. We would tie this, as we have done similarly in the past, to a roof project, roof 10 is, is going to be the priority no matter what happens for Vernon Hills. And so we would tie it to that project. Similarly, we, we tied the last year's one to roof 16. So that's what we, we would do. It's a $50,000 matching grant, dollar for dollar. So you have to do a $100,000 project in order to get the 50,000. And so we will have, we will have that and all the right documents for approval at our October board meeting.
So we'll approve that at the end of the month. It's not approving the project, which still needs to be designed in bed. Once we get approval of the grant, then the design in bid will take place.
And even part of that grant is you, you can't do something that has already, where the district has already committed money. The, the intention behind this is to spur on development, which we have not incurred any cost toward this yet. Or the board hasn't really authorized any spending on this project as of yet.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to that in a couple of weeks.
And can this roof also be made like solar ready?
That, that was, that question I had from, from Cara was the, was, is if, if that would be solar ready based on the calculations? Or what would it take to make it that way?
And if you do find that it can be made solar ready, then is it possible to combine with grants from other private sources, if you will, to actually put a solar panel out there like Exelon or one of the energy companies? Do they offer grants at all in that space?
I, I would not know an answer to that question. I would, I would have, I would not have an answer to that question.
I think we could probably reach out to Veraji or some of the other people that we were working with last year who had some ideas on alternate funding we could access.
And I would say that isn't necessarily need to be tied to roof 10. Like as Mark said, we, we have a roof that is ready now. It's just the question of.
Okay.
I knew West Jim at Vernon Hills engineered and it's all ready. The ports are already ready to drop wires through and.
Okay. So we were always interested in hearing if there's grant money available that would make solar move up on our list. Okay, item F, disposing the truck that we have replaced. Looks like we are planning to sell it. We'll be voting on that at the end of the month, correct? Any questions? Don, you good? Okay. Moving on, let's look at the future agenda items for FNF for the end of this month. Those are the items that we will be voting on. And then at FNF, a month from now, we'll be looking at the 2023 tax levy, long-term capital funding options, as well as the priority A items on the Vernon Hills High School 10-year health and life safety survey. Anything else anybody would like to discuss adding? We also have an update, I think planned from the grading and assessment committee? Is that correct?
Yes, that is on the list for October 23rd.
Oh, that's for PNP, not for FNF.
No, this is for the actual board meeting. It's not the next committee meeting. We wanted to make sure that we followed up with information in two weeks. So because today is when the grading and assessment pilot teachers were able to collaborate and receive some additional support and learning. So that will be embedded in the report.
And that'll be at the regular board meeting at the end of this month. Yes, thank you. Okay, great. Anything else we want to discuss?
I have a couple items that will be coming up in future for future bids. Will be the demo houses across the street. So been working on all the groundwork for it. Also be our landscape contract. We had a five-year landscape contract for Vernon Hills and Libertyville High Schools around the buildings. And they did rainier, that's ending in November. So I'd like to show the property instead of showing the property in January and February bid, you know, showing what it looks like right now and what we expect. So they see our expectations. So that'll be coming up. I'll be going out to bid for those couple of items.
Okay, thank you.
That brings up a, a point. We have purchased the land across the street, but I don't know that there's anybody other than Jim on this existing board who is part of the decisions to go ahead and purchase that property. Perhaps we can get an update on what our long-term plans are or what we're thinking about.
Okay. We can do that? Okay. Then if we have nothing further, we will adjourn this meeting. It is 9:34. Thank you, everybody, for your time.